We will now convene from closed session to open session. Mr. City Attorney, please provide a readout from the council set from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council is now back in open session, having met in closed session.
We will now convene from closed session.
All members being present. All members being present. As to the two items of regarding initiation of litigation. Presentations were provided by city staff, feedback given by the city council, but as to both items, there is no final reportable action to disclose at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We have a quorum and all council members in attendance are physically present and no members participating remotely for today's meeting. Madam City Clerk, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Will everyone please rise? Right hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may have a seat.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for being present today. Hope everyone's holidays were festive and wishing you all a Happy New Year. As Mayor of the City of San Fernando, I believe in creating an atmosphere of mutual respect and collaboration during our City Council meetings. Our meetings are an opportunity for all of us to have meaningful discussions, share our diverse perspectives and work together to make decisions that benefit our community. To ensure our meetings run smoothly and fairly, I'd like to share some of our envision, how I envision my approach to our meetings moving forward in regards to discussion and presentations. I understand there will be times when council members wish to recognize individuals or groups with certificates or resolutions. Be respectful, to be respectful of everyone's time, particularly for those waiting for agenda items and request and guest speakers. The council members who place the item on the agenda will present and speak. For the Student of the Month presentations, I would like all council members to take a moment to acknowledge the and congratulate the student. I feel it is important that we all acknowledge our youth. They are our future and being recognized by their council members is important. Resolutions will be noted without discussion, ensuring we maintain efficiency while honoring the significance of these recognitions. For presentations, for presentations from agencies or organizations, I will provide an opportunity for a round of discussion so that all council members can share their thoughts or ask questions. While I encourage thorough discussion, I also ask that we remain mindful of time so that everyone has a chance to contribute. Additional round rounds of discussion will always be available for those who need more time to share their thoughts or ask additional questions. In February, we will hold a special city council meeting during the day to focus a strategic planning. Mr. Kimball will keep us informed as the date approaches. This session will take place prior to the budget study sessions and will focus on actively defining the city's priorities and goals, identifying key areas to address and outlining the steps needed to achieve a shared vision for our community. After presentations, I will, I will provide each council member an opportunity to share their thoughts, ask questions and make comments. If further dialogue is needed, we will continue until the topic has been fully explored. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to contribute, I ask that we all wait our turn to speak or until I call on someone. This approach allows us to maintain a respectful flow and ensures all voices are heard. If we have a question while someone is speaking, please write it down or ask if during the next round of discussions. For extended discussions, added questions will be provided as needed to fully explore the topic or issues. I may ask for a motion or or a restated to ensure the record is clear and that staff will has all the necessary direction. Above all, I want to emphasize the importance of working together. We are all here to serve the same constituents and I know that we will all share the goal of making thoughtful and informed decisions in our city and today's sensitive political climate. I encourage that all of our approach are discussions with understanding, patience and an open mind. I deeply value the unique perspectives and contributions of each council member by fostering an atmosphere of respect and collaboration. We can all ensure our meetings are proactive, inclusive and reflective of our values we hold in our city and serve our community. Thank you for your dedication to the San Fernando and for your partnership in this important work. I look forward to serving alongside you for more community and moving our community forward. Thank you. So, can you see? My next item here. My next item here is our present presentations and.
Mayor, we have approval of the agenda first.
Oh, approval of the agenda.
And if I may, staff would like to remove item number nine. That's a request to increase the capital budget for the traffic signal modifications. We have some additional study to do on the budget related piece, so we will remove that from the agenda tonight and we'll bring it back at a future agenda.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Provo.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aide, yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is the presentations and the first presentation is the is the Certificates of Appreciation for the Las Palmas Senior Club outgoing board members. And that's something that I placed on the agenda for can the board members come forward? That would be Miguel Leon, President, which is the Chair of the Las Palmas Senior Club Board Member. The Vice Chair, Martha Lucero. Jose Garcia, Financial Reporter. Elisa Rodriguez, Secretary. Sergeant at Arms, Laura Almanza. Sunshine Committee, Mirna Delgado. Just want to say a few words about each of them, you know, because they're all such a vital part of the. I just want to say a few words on each of them. You know, Miguel is the, we call him the President. They, they just were got other titles and we call them the Chair, but he, he was a vital part of the Las Palmas Senior Club. They take this position for two years and they're volunteers. And our club members are about, how many club members, 300 club members that we have? Yeah, and we have meetings. I'm also a club member of the Las Palmas Senior Club. And we hold meetings that are responsible for having meetings every month and they meet before the meetings to develop their agenda. We have dances every month. They also coordinate trips for the senior club as well that are also open to the community. And they just keep everyone together and it provides a place for our seniors to go and have some friendship camaraderie and seeing, you know, seeing other faces and not just having a place to have, just staying at home. And it just gives them life and brings them joy to the, you know, and gives them additional years to their life. They're just, they just love going there to the senior club and spending time and chatting and talking with other people. And it's just, it's a home away from home for many of them. And so Miguel has done a great job in being President for the whole two years. Martha Lucero, right there, his right hand, always there with him and supporting him and all that he did for the two years as well. She's, you know, they, they work the dances. We have the dance every month. January, we had a New Year's dance from 8:00 PM to 1:00 in the morning. Thanksgiving dances, they're there, they're taking tickets for, they're there monitoring our tickets. So making sure we that the table captains submit their tickets for. And each of my mouth is getting dry, but just in every aspect of when you have a dance and every meeting, they're there. They each have their duties that they, that they're responsible for. We, the Finance Reporter, Jose, he's always around. What happened to Jose? Oh, my goodness, okay. Jose, he's always there, they're helping, they're volunteering, you know, they volunteer their time for two years and it's a big responsibility. Getting the finances together, giving a report. Those seniors, they make sure that they're know where their money's going and how much is spent on each item, that's for sure. And the Secretary, Elisa Rodriguez, gives the report every month at our meetings and also participates and volunteers in setting up for our dances as well. Sergeant at Arms, Laura, she's also one of the employees at the Las Palmas Park, always at our meetings and keeping order as well and always volunteering. The Sunshine Committee, Mirna Delgado, also at the meetings. And if there is anyone that is ill, she will send out a card to the person that is sick, to the family member, anyone passes away, they will send a plant to that family. And they are so appreciative when they get that plant. They will send in a letter and they read off the little, the letter or the card that they of thank you and how appreciative they are of receiving that letter because they may not get anything from anyone. And it just so makes such a difference in that family's life. So this, this club, it means a whole lot to a lot of people. And I wanted to make sure I acknowledged the work that they've done for the past two years because you make a difference in the lives of so many people. And not only of the club members, but for their families as well because they see that their elderly parents or grandparents are or great grandparents, how happy they are because they are participating in something like this. So I wanted to make sure. So if you want to say anything, you know, you're welcome to say a few words if you want, Miguel.
Buenas tardes, Feliz Año Nuevo hacia todos. Mi nombre es Miguel Ángel León, is President of Las Palmas Senior Season Club. Muchas gracias, Mayor Mendoza, the City of San Fernando, muchas gracias.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. My name is Miguel Ángel Mendoza.
Miguel León.
Miguel León, I'm sorry, Miguel León Mendoza. And I thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to be here.
Gracias, muchas gracias por este reconocimiento. De veras, es un honor y un privilegio de estar aquí con con distinguidas personas. Julio, muchas gracias, muchas gracias Julio por tu gran apoyo. Al señor Juan Salas, el supervisor Juan Salas, por su gran apoyo, por ser una persona con, también siendo este advisor, consejero. Y a todo el staff, a todo el staff, tanto en los meetings, tanto en los bailes. Muchas gracias por su gran apoyo también. Por supuesto también a todo mi board, a nuestro board que es como dijo la mayor, la señora Martha Lucero, el señor Jose Garcia, Elisa Rodriguez, Mirna Delgado y la señora Laura Almanza.
Thank you for this recognition. It's truly an honor to be here. Julio, thank you for your support. Juan Salas, thank you for your support and for being a good advisor. To all my staff, thank you. Thank you for being in all the meetings, all the dances. And I would like to recognize each one of them. Martha, Jose Casillas, Mirna, ¿cuál es el apellido de Mirna?
Delgado.
Mirna Delgado.
Laura Almanza.
Laura Almanza.
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 Elisa Rodriguez.
And Elisa Rodriguez.
Todo, en este, en este, todo este tiempo hemos trabajado en equipo, que es lo mejor. Así llevamos un mejor evento, tenemos este, así participamos más juntos, más con más fuerza y damos hacia el evento, se hace más poderoso y más con más éxito. Muchas gracias a todos también, tanto a todos los voluntarios, tanto a todas muchas compañías que nos han apoyado en donar regalos, en apoyarnos en diferentes donaciones y especialmente también a todos los miembros porque sin los miembros no es club. Con ellos participen, con eso muchas gracias a todos ellos que nos han apoyado también, a todos los miembros del club que han sido un gran éxito hasta ahora. Ha sido gran éxito, seguimos, esperamos que siga así todo el tiempo. Y otra cosa, no solamente nos hemos concentrado en los eventos, sino que hemos trabajado en diferentes eventos, hemos participado en diferentes ocasiones.
So all this time we have worked as a team and this has given us the successful of our events. And I thank you all, all our volunteers for your time, for your donations and to all the members that are involved in our club because you guys, without the members, we wouldn't have the success that we have at the club. And all the concentration that has been given to different kind of events as well.
Como dice, como les dije, hemos participado en diferentes eventos y hemos llevado a los, a los seniors, a todos los miembros les hemos traído, les hemos llevado diferentes, ya sea orientaciones para que, para que, para que apoyarlos en diferentes maneras. Ya sea en una manera donde ellos, ya que cierta edad ellos tengan, tengan sus documentos en caso de emergencia. El más completamente más en orden, hemos llevado personas para que les den orientación. Hemos llevado otras personas también para que les den o expliquen cuál es la diferencia, qué es lo que quiere decir el médico, qué es lo bueno y qué es lo malo. También hemos invitado al jefe de policía también que nos hizo el favor de acá exponernos y le pidió de favor que especificara qué es lo que es un fraude hacia todas las personas y especialmente a los niños porque hay muchas personas que se han aprovechado muchos de los niños, no solamente entre las familias, sino que también entre toda la comunidad y en diferentes, en diferentes, en amistades completamente. Y ese es un, es un gran honor también para decirle también al jefe de la policía que gracias por su apoyo para, por apoyarnos en esa manera, para abrirle los ojos a todas las personas que no tengan mucha confianza, no quede, no quede, no tengan confianza, sino que estén, este, que estén alertas en cualquier fraude porque hasta las mismas familias, entre las mismas familias los han dejado en la pura calle. Gracias.
So as I said before, we have participated in a lot of events for our seniors and we have also provided orientations for certain topics that they need. For example, to get their documentations ready, they can get their medical information. We also have invited the Police Department Chief and he had explained about fraud. Especially fraud happens to the seniors within families. And we have provided this information and we would like to continue providing this kind of orientations for them. And we understand fraud has happened also within the families and had left our seniors on the streets.
Muchas gracias, de veras, pues esto de nuestra parte, de veras. Y como le dije al nuevo presidente, no solamente que el nuevo presidente no piensa que voy a estar afuera, sino que también le hablé con él y le ofrecí mi apoyo en cualquier circunstancia. Muchas gracias de veras a toda la Ciudad de San Fernando, muchas gracias Mayor Julio, todos, por favor. Muchas gracias de todo corazón, se les agradece.
Thank you. So thank you to all, all my behalf. I have already spoken to the new president and I have provided my full support. Thank you, City Mayor, and thank you Julio.
Thank you.
Les voy a, voy a dar sus certificados y luego nos tomamos una foto. Felicidades. Muchas, muchas gracias. Yo estoy hablando y ustedes también.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of certificate of appreciation for the San Fernando Bakery recognition of their, of their contributions to the city. This is placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez.
Mayor, I had to move this item for the next meeting. They're, they're like other business, they're really busy today and they asked me to move it for the second meeting. De la, ya, everybody's ordering the rosca.
I picked mine up today. Okay, so the next, one is the certificate of appreciation for professional printing services in recognition of their contributions to the city. For professional printing, this is Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, it's, it's my pleasure to recognize out the business in our community to have been supporting our local economy for decades through their dedicated work and distance. I would like to highlight the professional printing honored by Mr. Al Valdez and his standing staff, Gabi, Tony, Sylvia, and the whole family. Their excellent service to the residents in our city is truly appreciated. Congratulations, and thank you so much for all you do for our families. If you can come to the podium, maybe Mr. Valdez want to say a few words?
Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone. It's truly an honor to be recognized. You know, we've been there for quite a while, and we'll be coming up on celebrating 50 years. And none of this would be possible had it not been for the community supporting us, the friends and families that just share their word of what we do. And, you know, we really, really appreciate it. And, you know, we are extremely humbled to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you can pass to the front, we're gonna take a photo with the members if you join me.
Our next presentation, certificate of appreciation to all the Dorado Home Furniture in recognition of their contributions to the city, placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez.
El Dorado, la mueblería El Dorado. Es una, I gonna say a few words in Spanish. This, this business is really close to my heart. Because my mom used to buy from this store, like over thirty years ago. El Dorado, El Dorado has been in our city near like three decades. And today I want to recognize them for the significant contribution during the pandemia. In May 2020, they made their warehouse available to collect center to organize the fruit, food distribution in our city. The San Fernando Swammy, along with the city, the police, the business and volunteers. We were available to provide food for more than 10,000 families. This is what I call community unite. Thank you to the owner, Mento Paredes, and his family for their help during this time in crisis. I'm not sure if you mentor is here. Okay, if you can pass to the podium and maybe you can share a little bit about the family business.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for part of El Dorado Furniture. Apologize that I prepared speech, but thank you for your guys' time. We hope to continue to be here and continue to support the community.
Thank you. If you can pass to the front, if you like to.
At this time on the agenda, oh, introduction of new employees?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, we have one new employee today. I'd like to have Will Petner join us at the podium. Will is our newly hired assistant to the city manager. He, he started just after our last meeting in December. So he's been getting acclimated to San Fernando for the past few weeks. Will comes to the city with a breadth of experience, which includes some stints in the cities of Ojai, Pasadena and La Cuenyata Flint Ridge. He also worked with the Ontario Ministry of Colleges and Universities. That's in Canada, don't you know? That's my really terrible Canadian accent. He lives locally in Northridge with his wife Haley and his new pup. What was he, what's your new dog's name?
Hershey.
Hershey, should have left that out. So please join me in welcoming Will, he's been a really great addition to the team, he fits in well. And he'll be next to Julio. Will, if you want to say a few words?
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you so much for having me here today. I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Kimball and the leadership team for providing me with this opportunity to contribute to the city and for allowing for such a clean landing in the last three weeks. As, as Mr. Kimball mentioned, I come from the city of Ojai, where I also work within the city manager's office. So this is a pretty comfortable position and exciting step up to help contribute over the next year. So thank you all so much, I'm really looking forward to working all, with all of you in the near future and contributing to the community. Thank you.
At this time on the agenda is decorum in order, Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the decorum in order?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is the decorum in order admonition for the San Fernando City Council. The city council, elected by the public, must be free to discuss issues confronting the city in an orderly environment. Members of the public attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the city council as set forth in the San Fernando procedural manual. Any person making impertinent, derogatory, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending a city council meeting and where such behavior is found to be disruptive to the proceedings may be removed from the room if the presiding officer so directs the sergeant of arms. And such person may be barred from further audience before the city council. That concludes the admonition, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public statements. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public statements this evening?
Yes, thank you. This is the time and place for public comments on items on the agenda or other city issues. If there's anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak, please fill out the blue form located on the table in the council chamber's entrance and submit it to the city clerk. When your name is announced to speak, please walk up to the podium to address the city council. Please voluntarily state your name and address and speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Individuals using interpretation services will be given six minutes to ensure non-English speakers have the same opportunity to address the city council. Please note that the interpreter will pause the speaker frequently to allow adequate time for translating their comments as closely and accurately as possible. Callers wishing to provide a live public comment, please close your YouTube stream of the city council meeting as there is an approximate eight-second delay and will interfere with the live meeting streaming to YouTube. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be identified by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Lastly, please understand that the city council is unable to respond to questions in order to comply with public meeting requirements and must refrain from engaging in any dialogue during the public comment period. City staff will have your contact information, will be able to follow up directly with you regarding your question. Our first public comments will be from Maria Luisa Palma, followed by Gus Villaya, followed by Marcela Rodriguez.
Good evening and congratulations to all the new re-elected members and officers. My name is Maria Luisa Palma. I don't live within the city limits, but I do live in the San Fernando Valley, have lived here for many, many years. My parents are active members of the Las Palmas Senior Club there for many, many years. I am also the executive director of a nonprofit organization called Oleada, which focuses on promoting parent involvement in schools, specifically within the Los Angeles Unified School District. One of our projects is we are currently assisting and supporting a group of parents known as La Red de Padres por la Seguridad Escolar, the Parent Network for School Safety, and helping them with their parent advocacy with LA Unified. They are requesting to have the school police to be brought back to school campuses. I have helped them complete a parent petition across all the LA Unified Board districts, across all the regions. We have had parents of students within San Fernando City sign the petition, including San Fernando High School, Chavez Academy, and surrounding schools like Silmar High School, Arlita High School. We have major safety issues in our schools. And as you will have in audience today with your chief of police, I am asking for your support to help us parents within the school district, Los Angeles Unified. We are advocating for transparency, we do not have ongoing reporting of incidents. The most comprehensive set of incidents that we've received from them were published by the district in April of 2024. They were reported in the Los Angeles Times on May 6th, I have a copy of that here for you. But basically what we've seen is that fighting, use of substances, weapons, almost doubled since the school police officers were removed from campuses after the schools reopened after the pandemic. Your support would be very well received. We have, we constantly, our parents speak at, at LA Unified Board meetings, but we have had very little contact with individual board members. Kelly Gonis, the representative for this area, District 6, is adamant that she is against having school police officers on campuses. She states that some students are afraid and they're of, of school police and therefore she will not be voting to have them return. A task force back in May of 2024 recommended that each school individually be allowed to elect to have a school police officer on campus, but that has not been brought to a vote. We are here tonight to bring your attention to this issue and ask you to help the parents in this community and surrounding communities in the San Fernando Valley to advocate for this. How long will this situation continue? We continue to have incidents of weapons and kids getting hurt, stabbed, many, many incidents. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, feliz año nuevo a todos. Buenas tardes, señora alcaldesa, miembros del Consili de la Ciudad de San Fernando, señor manejador de la ciudad, señor de departamento de policía, administración y secretarias. Mi nombre es Marcela Rodríguez. Hoy voy a hacer un comentario que personalmente yo lo comprobé con mí, conmigo misma. Acudí al swamme de San Fernando.
So good evening, everybody, and happy new years. Greetings to Madam Mayor and members of the council, city manager, administration, secretary, and police department. I proved myself what's going on at the swap meet of San Fernando.
No voy usualmente, pero me gusta ir al principio del año. Mi, mi preocupación es, por ejemplo, a las, la ciudad de San Fernando, dí el permiso a los vendedores de cerveza. Bueno, yo personalmente oí que se quejaba la gente de la cerveza, de que no estaban dando la cerveza adecuada. Y yo fui y compré una cerveza, personalmente. Miré cómo la prepararon, le ponen la mitad de clamato y luego le ponen la otra mitad de la cerveza. Si yo estoy pagando 16 dólares por una cerveza, ¿por qué me están dando la mitad de la cerveza? Eso es un robo.
So I don't normally visit San Fernando Swap Meet, however, I like to go at the beginning of the year. And I see that the city of San Fernando has given permit for them to sell the beer at the swap meet. People have complained about the beer, that it's not the adequate beer. And that they get half of, in their cups, they get half of clamato and half of the beer. And they have to pay 16 dólares. I proved it myself, I went to buy a beer and I saw that, that's how they were serving them. So I don't think that's right if I'm paying 16 dólares for a beer.
Y eso, para nosotros, los que estamos, este, como consumidores, es, para mí es un robo que están haciendo con eso. Otra de las cosas, por ejemplo, cuando van a entrar los niños, tienen una medida a ir a la hora de la entrada. Mi nieta estaba a la medida, exactamente a la medida. La señora muy molesta porque siempre son bien groseras las señoras que están ahí en, en las casillas para dar los boletos. Dijo, no, tiene que pagar. Okey, yo le pago, no me quiere dar el boleto, le digo, dame el boleto porque yo te estoy pagando por un boleto. Yo pienso que los niños son menores de edad, ellos no van a ir a consumir, es, son menores de edad. ¿Por qué si pueden pagar los menores de edad en un swamme y no pueden pagar en otro, en un evento grande?
So at the swap meet, they have this, like measuring tape where they measure the children. And my granddaughter was right at the limit. But the women there are very rude at the ticket booth. And they didn't want to give me a ticket, which I had already paid for. I don't think the minors will be consuming. I don't think the minors will be consuming anything. I don't understand why they don't want to give the tickets. If they sell tickets for the swap meet for the minors, why wouldn't they do it for a big event?
Por ejemplo, un señor compró una cerveza, se lo llevó a un amigo que tiene las, ahí en el swap vendiendo. Señor estaba vendiendo, y luego llegaron, y al poco del rato yo oí que estaban recogiendo las cosas. ¿Qué pasó? Dijo, es que él no puede estar tomando cerveza. Si el señor que está allí, que tiene permiso para vender, fue el amigo, le dio la cerveza, por eso lo sacaron del swap. Yo quiero saber si nada más es en una área donde van a tener la cerveza, o es en todo el swap, porque he visto gente caminando con su cerveza.
Now, another thing is that there was a man that bought a beer and took it to other, some other men that were sitting there, and the man that was, when, there was another gentleman who went over there and said that they couldn't be drinking beer there, but yet he was the one that bought the beer and took it to them. So, I want to know, is there a limited space where people can drink the beer, or is it throughout the entire swap meet that they're not allowed to drink?
Pienso que son cosas pequeñas, pero tenemos que poner atención, porque a nosotros los consumidores, por ejemplo, pagar 16 dólares por una cerveza es muy caro.
They may seem like minor things, but for us consumers who have to pay 16 dollars for a beer, I think it's too much.
Es una hora de trabajo de la Ciudad de San Fernando.
It's one hour of work time in the city of San Fernando.
Gracias, buenas tardes.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. My name is Gus Vialla Jr. I just wanted to formally introduce myself as the new field representative for Assembly District 43, which is your former colleague Mayor, or former Mayor, Celesta Rodriguez. And I'm just here today to offer my support and to my contact information as well for the council, as well as the community. I'll be here during the break and then afterwards as well. But just wanted to show my support of the community. I've been a member of San Fernando for a while now, and yeah, I want to see it prosper as well. So, I'm lucky to be a field representative representing that area. And yeah, just wanted to introduce myself, and like I said, I'll be in the back as well as my district director, Joanna. She is here today as well. Yeah, so we could exchange information if needed, and to community members as well. Thank you.
Next, we have Margarita Servicio, followed by Efren Lambera, followed by Maria Lambera, followed by Gustavo Ramirez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Margarita Servacio. Con mucho respeto, estoy aquí para decirles que no estoy de acuerdo en la construcción de diez apartamentos de tres pisos y dos casas en el 833 North Brand Boulevard in San Fernando. ¿Qué estudios han hecho de drenaje, gas, o el subsuelo para estar aprobando este proyecto?
Good evening. My name is Margarita Servacio, and with much respect, I come before you to let you know that I am here because, to tell you that I do not agree with the construction of the apartment building of three floors, three stories, and two houses at 833 North Brand, San Fernando. What studies have you guys done on the drain, on the drains and the gas, so that they can approve this project?
No nos oponemos que construyan, pero que hagan casas adecuadas a la zona. Habiendo en la Ciudad de San Fernando tanto terreno solo y en lugares comerciales, ¿por qué hacerlo en lugares residenciales?
We don't oppose the construction, but we do ask that you guys construct homes that are adequate for the zone that we live in. There are being spaces in the city of San Fernando and so much property, but on, being a lot of property on commercial places, why construct in the residential areas?
Y quiero decirle también a Joel Fajardo que su Comisionada de Planificación y Preservación no apoyó a la comunidad y dijo sí al proyecto en la junta que hubo el 14 de octubre del 2024. Esperamos que tú sí nos apoyes.
I also want to say to Joel Fajardo of his plan, of his commission, commissionary plan and preservation, he did not support the community, and he said yes to the project in the last meeting of October 14, 2024. We hope that you can support us.
Y pido a los cinco representantes aquí presentes que nos apoyen y recuerden, el pueblo votamos por ustedes. No los puso esta persona que está destruyendo nuestra ciudad.
And I asked the five representatives that are here before us to support us, to remember that us, the people, voted for you all. We are the ones that put you in those seats, not the people that are destroying the city.
También pedimos que hagan todo lo posible para que les devuelvan los parqueaderos en toda la calle Gleno's y quiten el cemento que pusieron a media de la calle. Que lo único que ha causado, que haya más accidentes que la ambulancia, bomberos y policías, se les está haciendo muy difícil llegar a lugares cuando hay alguna emergencia.
We ask that you give us back our parking, our parking spaces. The parking spaces in all the streets are on Gleno's, and that you remove the cement that they put in the middle of the street, that it's only causing more accidents. And it's making it difficult for the ambulance, the firefighters, and police officers to get around, to make it to the places when there is an emergency.
También pedimos que se le devuelvan los parqueaderos que les quitaron a todos los negocios en la calle McClay. Muchas gracias por su atención.
We also ask that you give back the parking lots that were taken away of the businesses on McClay Street. Thank you very much for your attention.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Efren Lambera, y soy residente de esta ciudad desde hace 28 años. Y en los últimos meses he sido testigo como la ciudad ha perdido mucha seguridad. Lo digo porque ha habido en los últimos ocho meses un robo de catalísticos y robo de carros en una distancia de 200 pies. Yo vivo aquí por la casi esquina de Gleno's y Brand. Y mi preocupación es, y mi pregunta también es, ¿qué está haciendo la, qué puede hacer la ciudad y la policía para detener este problema?
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Efren Lambera. I am a resident of 28 years, and I am a witness on how the city has lost its safetiness. For a period of eight months, we have seen theft of the Cadillac converters and cars. And I'm at about a distance from Gleno's and Brand, so I would like to know what the city and the police department are doing about this situation.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Maria Lambera, and I live at 847 North Brand Boulevard. And I just have something to say. I'm against the, with the new construction that they want to build at 833 North Brand Boulevard. And I just have something to say that supposedly, I read about the history of San Fernando, that this street, North Brand Boulevard, was the first, was the first Boulevard, and I don't understand why they want to build a building. You know, we know that we have three schools on this, on this Boulevard, and I think it's more, more dangerous for the kids, the ones they go to school. And besides that, I don't understand how come the city of San Fernando is giving permission to build the building at 833 North Brand Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Hello, I'd like to speak in English, but can I have a translator, or is that how it works, or not? Okay. Right, okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay, great, great. Thank you. So, Gustavo, do I start now? Oh, yeah. My name is Gustavo Ramirez. I'm really honored to be here. Thank you so much, Will. It's great to meet you and congratulations. And Gus, right? Yeah, I'm Gus too, as well. So, gracias, mi tocayo, and congratulations, everybody. I'm honored to be here again. So, nice to meet you right now, Mayor Mendoza, and all of city council. And thank you so much, Patty Lopez, council member, for inviting me here. Patty Lopez has come all the way to Pomona, where I live, Pomona, California, to help the community, and she's gone to Fontana, to Tijuana, Mexico, to Guatemala, I mean, like, and to help serve the people and build community and make dreams come true. So, I felt, well, she asked me to, to ask you to be a part of World Peace Now, or to see how we can help each other, and how we can help you from Pomona to San Fernando. Pomona has been a city, so I'm honored to be here from, from the other valley, the Pomona Valley. But, time, oh gosh. So, Pomona is a city with rich, rich, rich history and a lot of culture, and Second Street Antique Row and Artist Colony and the Glass House and the Fox Theater, and amazing culture, but it's really high in crime, from prostitution, sex work, to fentanyl use. That fentanyl is soaring in business there in Pomona, unfortunately, and a lot of deaths. Even a middle schooler just died of a meth overdose, just barely in middle school. And even suicide and murder. So, I had this crazy idea to create an organization to bring peace on earth, like no wars, and peace and love and dignity and well-being on the planet, but that's pretty big. So, we decided to start locally with Pomona. So, we're called World Peace Now, the organization, and we're extending our hands to San Fernando. And we envision transformed communities, beginning with Pomona and San Fernando and our interconnected cities, to be truly vibrant, like not just on a mission statement, but in actuality, safe, like truly safe, with well-being and celebration. We imagine Pomona Valley, but now San Fernando, the real valley, as a hub of peace and example to the world. Oh, no, 13. So, I have, we're having an event on Saturday, January 18th, this Martin Luther King Weekend, and I have tons of flyers for everyone here in the public and everyone there, for all of you, and let's join together, and thank you. Let me know how I can serve you. Gracias. Y sí se puede.
That concludes public comment.
The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull items for discussion?
I would like to pull items number five, six, and 10.
Can you repeat those, please?
Five, six, and 10.
And I wish to pull item number four. And I will also be recusing myself from item number 10, because I live with, my residence is within 500 feet of it, and I will have to leave the room as well, since it will be discussed. Okay, so, so five, six, and 10, so that's one. So, okay, so, so do we have a motion to approve number, items number one, two, three, seven, and eight?
I may second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, item number four. What was item number four? Okay, item number four, I asked this one to be pulled, only because I wanted, you know, this is the one that is regarding the, it's a receive and file and on the 2024 Commissioner Attendance Report, and I wanted to take a moment just to stress the importance for our commissioners to attend the commission meetings. And the, these meetings are critical to the work of the city, and the commissions rely on the presence and the voice and the vote of each commission member to effectively address the issues before them. This is a, in this particular case, we, I need to point out to our council member, to Councilmember Solario, so point, he has missed three consecutive meetings. And while I understand that the commissioner did call in to notify their inability to attend consistent attendance, it's essential to ensure a quorum. Without a quorum, meetings must be canceled, which delays important work and disrupts the workflow of decision-making. If a commissioner finds they cannot commit to attending all meetings, it is important for them to, to be honest about their availability. In such cases, it would be better to step aside if they're unable to attend, and to notify their council member. I just want to say that, you know, I do appreciate that she did, her commissioner did call in and say she was unable to attend. My intention is not to remover a council member, you know, that's not my intention. I just want to say that we need to be on our commissioners. I, myself as well, need to be on my commissioners to ensure that they are attending, and all of us should be on, ensuring that they attend all meetings and are on time. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say on that item. So, I'll just say, I move to approve this item.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you for raising that point. I do think we had several commission meetings, not just that one, but that were canceled due to lack of quorum. I had a question about attachment aid to this report. I didn't pull it, but that was just for one month. Is it supposed to have the year's worth of attendance, or just the last month of attendance in this report? Is it for the whole 2024, or are we only attaching last month?
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. The report that's attached was only for the month of November, reflecting the app. The report that's attached was only for the month of November, reflecting the absentee.
Oh, okay. So do, oh, is that, do we do it every month or was that because it went over three absences?
A monthly report is emailed to City Council regarding attendance.
So, so that was it. I just wanted to, you know, but I do appreciate that she did call and I want to make that noted that, uh, she called in that she was going to miss. So, um, I just, I moved this item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Five and six are, are the same idea, but I'll start with five. Um, these are amendments to professional service agreements, um, for on-call planning services. And I, I will want to tell everyone, I, um, did not, you know, confer with the city manager about this ahead of time. So I apologize for that. But my understanding is that they are for, um, should the mixed-use overlay plan be passed, we may need extra services from, um, this contractor. So I'm wondering, should we, should we not wait until we see if it's passed or not? Are, are we jumping the gun a little bit with these two, um, contracts? So that's probably why, why I will be abstaining. Uh, I have no necessary objection. It just seems like we should determine first if there's, um, if that's the path we're going down. But again, I didn't, uh, ask him with enough time. So he, I may have a misunderstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If I, if I may, uh, just so real quick, so mixed-use ordinance for five, uh, for PCE is part of it, but it's also, um, there's, there's other parts of, that we need, that we're asking the consultant to, uh, work on as well, which includes amending the zoning code and reorganizing the zoning code, which is independent of the mixed-use ordinance. Um, the, uh, updating our ADU ordinance and drafting various policies and protocols for many of these state housing-related laws that have been passed over the last year or two. So those are all independent of mixed-use. Mixed-use is also one, um, that is included, but there are other items and I can let Erica. But again, e- even if it, if it passed, it doesn't require us to move forward with mixed-use. It just gives us the contract authority if council does move forward with that. For number six, the RingCon one, um, I don't believe, I believe that's only for, um, on-call planning services and then amending the zoning code and landscape ordinance. Is that, um, I don't know if they have much to do with mixed-use potentially, but again, um, it's just providing authority for those other, uh, activities. And it doesn't require the council to move forward with anything. It's just, it's just contract authority. But I'll pass it to Erica to correct anything I may have said incorrectly.
No, that is correct.
Councilmember Fajardo.
I have no questions.
Councilmember, um, Vice Mayor, uh, no, I say, uh, Councilmember Lopez.
No, no comments at this moment.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Questions?
I have no questions. So is there a motion and a second on this item? On this is what be item five and six.
If council desires, you can do five and six together, yes.
Motion to move both items forward.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So on, we're on item number 10 and I will leave the room and Council, Vice Mayor Solorio will take over.
Thank you. Since the mayor has recused herself, um, Councilmember Garcia, since you pulled the item, would you like to start?
Yes, um, so item number 10 is a contract with Craft Water for the Carlos Street Green Alley Project. Um, I just had a question. It was very in-depth, almost feeling like it was a plan. And I know when tree people came here to address some of our concerns, they made it clear they were going to be very community-focused and take feedback from the community first before going into, um, making any plans and they were going to make sure it fit with what we wanted. So I just wanted to make sure that was happening. Cause I saw some of the options in here and it just seemed, they, they haven't done anything yet. So I was, um, a little concerned, but again, I could have a misunderstanding of this item.
Thank you, Councilmember. So I, I'll just start and then, and then have Wendell, I'll throw him a softball. He can knock it out of the park. But, um, so typically what we, we do in the projects is get a design firm on board so that when we do have the community outreach, the design firm, um, will actually attend those meetings and hear directly from the public on, on the design elements and, and get the public input. So I believe that's why we're presenting that to City Council now to award the design contract. It, um, in anticipation of the, uh, public outreach. But I will ask, uh, Wendell to provide, uh, additional, um, additional info on the public outreach and, and why we're bringing this to Council at this point in the process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and, and, um, Mr. Kimball. Uh, yes, Mr. Kimball was correct. In this particular instance, we've done extensive amount of outreach, but it's been only on a conceptual, kind of a high-level conceptual and it identifies typical elements that may be used as a part of the Green Alley project. And what the designer will do, will focus in on what the actual, uh, design project will be for, for the community. Within this, uh, uh, request for proposal, there are several community workshops that will be involved where there will be reach out, uh, outreach to the community for their input about the design as well as coming back to, uh, council with several concepts for, uh, council to consider as well as the, um, Planning Committee will probably run it by them also, so.
Um, and then was that, that outreach, is that when we're talking about, that outreach from, um, quite a few years ago?
Yeah, that was the conceptual outreach, okay? And so that's just the, the concept to see what are the barriers, kind of a high-level engineering to see if it's even feasible in, in the area. And now that we found out that it is feasible, then we'll go back in to the community and, and come up with several, uh, conceptual, um, you know, several, several options for them to decide, uh, within the community on which option would be best for their little part of San Fernando.
If I may, Vice Mayor, just to, um, so we're not relying on, so now we'll be phase two. So we are going to do another phase of outreach. So we will be knocking on doors and getting folks that live and would be impacted to actually give more detailed feedback. So we're not relying on what we did a couple of years ago. That was to get the original, that, that was more about is there interest in a project? And for the grant application, now that we've, you know, decided to move forward with the project, this will be a very, a much more specific, but it will be a second round of outreach, um, that will be engaging all the community in that area.
Okay, cause I guess like when it says like kickoff meeting on page 702, um, or like 701 had all these designs, it just seemed far down, but maybe I don't understand that.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, if I may, uh, or through the Vice Mayor, if I may, uh, so on page 700, there's a section, this is their actual proposal, which becomes part of the contract, um, community engagement. So, um, they're prepared to support tree people's efforts, but they have accounted for three, um, workshops. So three new workshops that they'll be working with tree people, um, or attending with tree people. And then they anticipate heavy outreach at the project outset to define, um, the final design and introduce the neighbors to overall goals. So, um, again, you, you can see that they value, they want, they value community engagement as highly as we do because they don't want to design in a bubble, otherwise they'll have wasted a lot of work. So, um, they do have in their proposal what, that at least three community, um, three workshops with the community.
Okay, well, I like how you say it, but I didn't get that from the proposal. But those, I'm just, those are just the concerns I was raising. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick and Wendell for that readout. Um, Councilmember Lopez?
Um, I just, I knew, I knew to, to this project, but, um, in December, I took a, a good amount of my time to do the research to the community and especially to some of the business. And the, the feedback from there, there was saying there, there's several streets and alleys that need to be fixeded. And I can be a little bit more specific, that ones behind Jesse Penny, the alley in Jesse Penny and the Sally Street and the Worm Street, they've been in the list for, uh, for a long time. And one of the businesses, they, since they, he moved to the city, they never make into the list. So I just wanted to know how these projects come in aboard without notifying specifically that business have been here for over, uh, three or four decades. So I'm really worried and I would like to see more into the feedback. Again, the, there's a few new organizations to come up, they've been coming aboard to the city, but they're really not talking to the residents and specifically, and, and I, and some people feel that, they feel a side to fix their areas. And, you know, they're being in our city and I just want to express that concern to if we can make a list or the, uh, maybe just, this is one of the projects, but in the future, if we can make aware of the nonprofits that are working in the community or applying to work in the community to speak with a resident that speak only Spanish, that is that issue. They feel like they don't, the city don't care for the, uh, Spanish Latino community. And that's what I want to express that concern.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And if I may, I just wanted to take, um, so we will, through the budget process, uh, that will be upcoming, probably in May, when we come to council, um, our Public Works Department does have a pavement management master plan. And so we will identify, and we've been working through that to address a number of different roads and we base it, you know, the, the plan is based on condition of the road and cost benefit. So we'll have phase three and the next, the next roads that are in line to be, um, paved will be coming up through the, um, that, uh, pavement management master plan. And then we'll be discussing with council during the budget in May. And I do say, I, I know we do, we make a pretty strong effort to, to make sure all of our notices that we send out are in both English and Spanish, that we are, um, you know, uh, just make sure that we're, um, empathetic to the folks that may not, you know, English may not be their first language. So we always try to, and we, we're always improving that, but we're trying to put in both English and Spanish, all of our notices. So, but thank you for that.
I have no questions.
Thank you. And I have no questions on this item. I do support the item. Um, is there a motion to move this forward in a second?
Oh, moved.
Roll call. Councilmember Patty Lopez.
I'm standing.
Councilmember Garcia.
I was abstaining as well.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Yes.
And Mayor Mendoza is absent.
So I'm, I'm gonna check with, uh, our city attorney who left at the most inopportune time. But I believe, I don't, I believe two abstentions are.
Two abstentions don't count.
Don't count, so it should be two, nothing. But let me, let me double check with.
Unless it's a con, there's only cer, but there are certain agenda items that are required, reagreement of votes, resolutions, ordinances, approval of contracts.
But let us double check.
I think it's a notice of relief.
Uh, two yes and two abstains, there's no resolution? Uh, yeah, that, that, that rins. You don't need three votes because it doesn't involve a resolution or an ordinance. So Roberts Rule applies. The two yes votes prevail because there are no, uh, there are no no votes and the abstains count as a, as an I don't care vote.
So that is three, I've been correct three times tonight?
Maybe not I don't care.
I don't, I agree. I don't need it's I don't care.
For the record, that was.
Yeah. No, I agree a hundred percent, yeah.
So, uh, motion passes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, and you want to get the mayor? All right, awesome. Wait for her to move on.
I apologize, I was trying to heat my dinner, so.
Okay, next item is, um, we're now on administrative reports and I am going to pull item number 14 since I have, uh, which is the appointment of the Com- Commissioner for Parks and Recreation. Item that I placed. And that is for my, the Commissioner for Parks and, uh, Wellness and Recreation. And that would be Freddie Ortega. And if Freddie wants to come to the podium, I will read his bio. Freddie Ortega, uh, has lived in the city of San Fernando for five years and spent his entire life in the San Fernando Valley. He graduated from Birmingham Community Charter High School in, uh, 2017 and has pursued various professional certifications, including a leadership certificate from the Leadership Institute and a, and a plumbing certification from West Valley Occupational Center. With, uh, with this expertise in irrigation systems and drains, Freddie developed his skills as an early, at an urgent, early age in assisting with, uh, his grandfather with residential plumbing projects during summer vacations. He now owns a plumbing business and he successfully up operates, has operated it for the past three years. Freddie is passionate about giving back to his community. He plans to volunteer with tree people to help plant trees and enhance the environment in San Fernando. He, uh, he is committed to foster wellness and recreation opportunities in the, uh, for the city's residents. Freddie also leads a recreational sports team, uh, which he manages every Friday, reflecting, uh, his love for sports and community engagement. Freddie's desire to join the Parks Wellness and Recreation Commission stems from his passion for the city and its growth. He is eager to continue to the, um, to contribute to the community in meaningful ways, which, uh, with, while continuing to learn to grow in the role, in his role. Freddie believes that serving, uh, on the commission will allow him to make a lasting positive impact on San Fernando's parks and recreational programs. So welcome Freddie. And so I will pass it on to my commissioners and the Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes, well, thank you so much for coming today. You're dressed like super professionally for, for this position. I'm really impressed that you came here for this. So professional and yeah, I like all the things that the mayor has to say about you. I know that she is very conscientious of finding people who care for the community and put the community first. And so hearing some of your ideas, I think you'll be an extraordinary asset to our commission. So welcome to the service for the city and I look forward to learning more about you and seeing the great work that you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Just glad that you be part of that commissioners for the parks, which I'm really passionate about it. The safety of parks, I hopeful that you can make really good impact in the community and welcome to our city.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I have no questions, but I also wanted to welcome you to the commission.
Thank you, thank you.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Hi Freddie, I know with your wonderful background and your goals that you will achieve in this commission. So thank you so much for being a part of the commission and welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate you all.
Thank you. And so now we'll have a, do I have a, make a motion to approve the appointment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I know what my tasks consist of and I will not disappoint.
Thank you, thank you Freddie. See, Freddie, let's take a picture. Do you have, want to take a picture?
Yes, please.
Here we are now on item number eleven, which is discussion and consideration regarding an update on the preparation of a new memorandum of understanding with the mall association to support and facilitate an effective downtown mall association. Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy City Manager Kanika Kiff will provide a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Member of the council. The item tonight is to give the council an update regarding work with the mall association on the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, and also to make recommendation to appoint an ad hoc committee. Before I go there, I want to talk a little bit about the background about the mall association. Back in November nineteen sixty-five, ordinance nine twelve was adopted to create a parking and business improvement area A. And that's the area that's outlined here in red in the map. The ordinance was adopted to use money collected from businesses, from the business license, to maintain and operate parking lots and on-street parking meters. Then in November nineteen sixty-eight, another parking and business improvement district, area B, was created. And that's the area outlined in blue, the bigger area there. And perceived from there is to use to promote retail trade and public engagement, helping promote the business in that district. So I'm not going to talk too much about area A. The focus could be on area B because that's where the mall association is involved in. And in area B, there's two zones, zone one and zone two. And the reason why we're calling this out, as you see here, I identified the four purposes, purpose A through D. The ordinance was established to use the proceeds from the funding to, for purpose A, which have two parts. One is promotion of the retail activity, helping promote the business in that district. And two, working and maintaining the pedestrian mall in both zone. Then purpose, and that one is to apply to both zone one and zone two. Then purpose B is to provide music in public spaces and that's mainly in zone one. And that is the San Fernando pedestrian mall, if to have music out there to create a lively downtown. And then purpose C is to promote public event, allowing them to have public events such as art shows and festivals in public places in either zone, so throughout area B. Then purpose D is to decorate public places in both zone. The city may use a fund to pay an organization to perform purpose A through D. So then now I'll talk a little bit about the mall association. In September nineteen eighty-four, they create the mall assessment district, which is known as the mall association. It was incorporated as a California nonprofit mutual benefit corporation for the sole purpose of administering business area B, working with the city on purpose A to D, except for mall maintenance, which is reserved to the city. So in nineteen eighty-four, in December, after their incorporation, the city established a contract with the mall association that set guidelines. And here I outline some of the guidelines, essentially, the guidelines, well, these are the agreement that the mall association needs to provide an annual program and budget to the council for approval, covering the year before, from January to December. And then to submit a bi-week, an annual report twice by January first and July first, to submit a report describing their activity to explain what they done in the six months before. The mall association also engage in fundraising activity and payment to the mall association is through reimbursement basis only. The city can advance them the money ahead of time, but not to exceed a thousand dollars, just to help them cover operation costs. The city and staff has been working with the mall associations to establish, to create a new MOU, to include best practices in business improvement district management and to address key areas such as board structures and representation, city participation, operation transparency, financial accountability, merchant support, and enhancing maintenance. The MOU will also include a section for special event that will call out response, the responsible party for organizing and covering the cost for these event. For example, the San Fernando outdoor market that was originally established during the COVID-19 pandemic was established during that time to support outdoor business operation. And that event has, is organized and managed by the mall association board. And the city, since it's established, has been providing street closure at no cost to support business operating outdoors. Because during the pandemic, it was encouraged for business to bring their business operation outside to support the existing business. With that, staff recommended that the city council appoint the development, economic development and the downtown master plan ad hoc committee to work with staff and the mall association to prepare the new MOU and to provide direction to staff as appropriate. And that conclude my presentation and staff is available to answer any question. The board member Christina and the president, Christina and Adriana were not able to attend this evening. They let me know that they're not feeling well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I, I think that it sounds like a good direction. This is just for direction? Sounds like a good direction? I had a question, when I was reading about the history of it, it said that at times the revenues were used for cleaning and maintenance, but now they're not, now the city covers that. And do you have any more information as to why that changed? I think, I mean, this might be between sixties and eighties, so I'm not sure if you would have more information on that.
So as far as the, I believe the city has always handled the, the maintenance. And you know, whenever, we've talked at various times about having, you know, potentially getting a landscape firm to handle that. And you know, obviously, we, there's a strong support through SEIU and other unions that they want to make sure that, that those jobs sort of stay with the city. So, so that tends to be, that tends to be the reason why we've kept the maintenance piece of that, that we're not supplanting, you know, city jobs.
And it might just be standard, but to this extent, there's anything exceptional or that we want to do that's extra in the area, could we use that funding for that or is?
Yeah, so I'll give you a, a good example. So we have the, we went to seven day a week street sweeping of the parking lots. So that actually, that doesn't happen anywhere else in the city. So that, we actually use that, the maintenance amount, yeah, revenues to pay for that enhanced. Because right now, everywhere else in the city gets once a week. So the enhanced six days a week, the difference is actually paid through this, this, because there's an enhanced service, we do use this revenue amount.
And then I also just saw in the presentation about the decorations, is that come from the revenues from the special businesses or are they so like historical that we don't?
So if, if new ones are purchased, they come from there. Again, the, you'll note, probably a few years ago, the string lights were hung, so those were purchased through, through the mall association. There was some electrical work that needed to be done at the time and I believe we split that cost. Part of it was part of the public right of way and part of that was enhancement. So yes, when there are special things that go up like that, that do come from those revenues.
Okay. And then in regards to the outdoor market, currently, what kind of resources do we provide for that? Is it?
Currently, it's, it's primarily, at first, we did have extra, you know, a lot of extra service. Right now, it's primarily traffic control. So it's mostly Wendell's guys and public works that are used to post the no parking signs early in the day. And then, and then put up the cones and they do actually station a person, a vehicle at each of the entrances to the mall to make sure we're providing extra protection for the, you know, pedestrians and those extra safety measures. So it's primarily with regards to public works and traffic control, street closure.
Okay. And does the extra public works cost come out of the revenues?
It currently does not. So that's one of the things that we'll need some, discuss with, with the ad hoc and then ultimately fully with council.
The city pays for it?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And it started during the pandemic when, when we were not allowed to have stores open indoors, is that right?
Right, right.
Okay. But there's no cutoff date on that?
No, so there wasn't a requirement, we've, I'd always sort of, the intention was always to revisit it as we revisited the MOU. Because we started this MOU process prior to COVID. It was in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen when we started the, the process of trying to replace a more modern MOU. And then it got put on hold, obviously, because the businesses were just focused on staying open for a couple of years during COVID. So now that we're revisiting that, you know, it was always our intention to revisit that.
But if we had any kind of like nonprofit who wanted to do like a farmer's market, would they also be able to utilize that extra public works for free?
No, we would, anyone that uses, so we, that would be, council would always be able to waive fees. But anyone that wants to use any public right of way would need to complete a special event permit application. And through that application, they're all, you know, every special event is kind of unique in the resources they need. Sometimes they need public safety, sometimes they don't, sometimes they'll need some recreation support, sometimes they need some public work support. So we review those all on a case by case basis with all the different departments and ultimately determine what is necessary if it's on public right of way. And then we, we have a fee schedule that would then come up with a fee. So anyone can certainly plan something. And then we let them know what that fee would be. And then from there, they either pay the fee and have the event or they, they can, you know, request different ways for fee waivers or fee reductions.
Okay. So is that what we have been waiving? Is it the, the permit request? We've been waiving all the fees associated with that?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's time to do a new MOU. And I would like to again invite that, the president and the members to come and maybe do a presentation before we, we take a direction on this. And I would like to be part of the ad hoc committee on this.
Are you done? Is that all?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes, I think that it's great that we're updating this. I think that from time to time, we need to update all of our agreements. I also think that it's helpful if the mall wants to, you know, come to the city to speak. I'm okay with approving this if there are three affirmative votes in the council. But if we feel that more time is needed, you know, I respect that as well.
Vice Mayor Solorio.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also okay moving this forward. I really do think that the mall association has done a lot of work already in our community. And they are, I think, a voice to some of our communities. So it's good to have them involved in the process. Those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
You know, I, I think that we should move forward with this item. And I do like that some of the things of, areas of focus that you have on here, which is board structure and representation, operating transparency, financial accountability, merchant support, enhanced maintenance and add, but I would like to see that when we form the ad hoc, whether it be the master plan ad hoc, would be that bilingual communication, communications with the businesses. It's important also to focus on, on how the mall association will promote the small businesses, advertising, sales promotions, activities and special promotional materials. This is listed on the, one of the MOUs on page seven hundred and thirty-four and seven hundred and thirty-five. But I think it should be more, you know, more show of a focus, part of your focus items. And also, I think that they should also cover some of the, the public works expenses as well. And any police officers' times that we, that they use if they call, request police officers to be present, that they should also cover the cost of our police officers. So that should be something that be discussed during the ad hoc meetings. And we also, what we need, also need to decide what ad hoc we want to put them.
Yes, and if I may, so we do, staff currently just recommended, since the downtown master plan is already an ad hoc, we could potentially add that to that existing ad hoc, which is councilmember Solorio and councilmember Garcia. If another council member was interested, you could certainly create a new ad hoc that's really just for this one purpose, which makes a lot, you know, that, that would make sense too. So, and then you could appoint any two council members that were interested to that ad hoc. So again, staff is sort of agnostic on which way you go. We put it out there just because it's an existing one. But if there are different council members that are interested in serving on this than are what on the downtown master plan ad hoc, we could certainly create a new one, you know, work with that ad hoc on this particular item.
I see that councilmember Lopez has shown an interest in it. I don't know if anyone else has interest on the ad hoc. Councilmember Garcia or?
I would be happy to provide, but if it's going to be incorporated already with the downtown master one, then I respect that as well. I understand that sometimes we have a larger number of ad hocs than we have staffing levels for. So I'm conscientious of that as well. So I'm a little agnostic on it, or I should say agnostic, I'm a little ambivalent on it. How do the current members of the downtown master ad hoc feel about this? Do they feel that it fits so neatly within their ad hoc already that they would prefer to handle it? Or do they feel that it's nuanced enough where it should be a separate ad hoc?
I think it's pretty nuanced. I feel, I feel, I kind of feel like we're going to discuss it anyway. So I'm fine with breaking it off before the big discussion in any way that the council feels is best.
Okay.
Just to elaborate, so, or ask, I think, a question. In terms that this is already a part of the downtown master plan, then would it be then the two people that are on the downtown master plan and then the two additional people that are on the new ad hoc? Or how would it work?
No, because we can only have two council members that could participate. So they're, so there's, this is a separate and distinct effort than the downtown master plan effort. So there's, there's overlap in that, there's the, you know, the mall association or the downtown, you know, is part of both. But there, they can certainly be treated separately. There doesn't need to be, so, so again, this MOU is specific enough that we could create a new ad hoc if council wanted to go that direction. And Councilmember Garcia mentioned it, we're certainly going to have a full discussion. I mean, the ad hoc's not making any decisions. We're just going to bounce some ideas and get some recommendations that we will ultimately then bring back to council. We'd like to get it turned around relatively quickly so that we can make sure, so we can get it moving forward. So we'd be looking at coming back, you know, within forty-five, thirty to forty-five days with a recommendation from the ad hoc on, you know, some things that we might want to look at in an MOU, or the successor MOU. So again, we could either use an existing ad hoc, but this is certainly different enough that a different ad hoc can be established.
I'd like to see Councilmember Garcia and Lopez on this mall association ad hoc. There's no...
I also don't mind Councilmember Fajardo if he wants to...
I'd be happy to serve on it unless someone's really passionate and they want to do it. So I'm, I'm willing to serve.
There are passions in here.
I mean, I'd like to serve on the downtown master plan, but I think if we're going to continue this conversation, nobody is, you know, opposed, then I, I can serve with Councilmember Lopez.
I think we're confused, Councilmember Fajardo, because you used the word like ambivalent. Do you want to serve on it?
No, I would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll serve on it.
That's what's throwing us off.
And if I may, this is, so, item number twelve is our ad hoc committees. And we, we have a few that are being sort of eliminated. And I don't know that Councilmember Fajardo actually would be serving on ad hoc, because we're eliminating some.
Give him one.
Yeah, and I don't think Councilmember Lopez either. So...
So we get a little crumb.
So that's Councilmember Lopez and Fajardo will be on this mall association ad hoc.
So is that part of the motion to approve this item?
Yeah, that's really, actually, the direction. If we can, that's the only motion we would need, is to form the ad hoc with the two council members.
So do we have a motion?
So moved?
I'll second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is discussion and consideration to review and approve the city council liaison assignments and ad hoc committee assignments. So this is number twelve. So, Mr. Kimball?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city clerk will give a brief overview of the liaison assignments and ad hoc, or proposed liaison assignments and ad hoc committees.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Tonight before you, the city council is discussion and consideration to review and approve city council liaison assignments and ad hoc committee assignments. On December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the city council approved the declaration of the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four election results. Installed two new council members, Victoria Garcia and Patty Lopez, and proceeded with the annual reorganization for the election of the mayor and vice mayor. At that time, Mary Mendoza was elected to serve as the mayor and Mary Solorio was elected to serve as vice mayor. Following the annual reorganization pursuant to section eleven point two of the city council procedure manual, the mayor, with the consent of the majority of the city council, may appoint council members to serve on liaison commissions, ad hoc committees, and standing committees. Mayor Mendoza's recommended city council liaison and ad hoc committee assignments have been placed on the dais for your consideration. They are also as attachment A and B of the staff report. And the Mayor Mendoza's recommendations are included in red text. It is recommended that the city council review and approve the city council liaison and ad hoc committee assignments and provide direction to staff as applicable. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, the only request that I have is to be able to stay on independent cities' finance authority. I've made all the meetings, I have been involved, and I don't see any good reason to, for me to be removed. I understand that all of us could do an excellent job on probably most of these committees. But given that, at least to the best of my recollection, I have perfect attendance and I've been involved in the issues, I would like to remain on there.
What number is that, Joe?
Unless I misreading it, number seven? I got switched, I got switched out and became the alternate.
Fine with me, I mean, that's fine.
And that's the only committee where I actually represent, yeah.
Well, just switch it.
Councilmember Garcia?
I don't have any comments. I'm, I'm happy with the Contract Cities, which is one that I've been working to get involved with, and then maintaining my previous appointment. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
I'm fine with it, aside.
Okay. Vice Mayor Solorio?
I am good with all of these appointments.
And I'm fine. So we just have the one change with item number, with number seven, with Councilmember Fajardo on independent cities' finance authority, the ICFA. He is now the delegate. And Councilmember Garcia is the alternate. So I move to approve this item.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item number thirteen, discussion and consideration regarding continuation of water service shut-off or implementation of an assessment process through the annual property tax roll for non-payment of delinquent accounts. Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Erica Melton will provide staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Tonight I will be presenting a verbal update with regards to this item. Since two thousand eighteen, there have been two bills passed to the state of California providing new and expanded protections for water residential customers. The city has since amended its code to comply, which was also a necessary step in effort to reinstate standard operations following the pandemic. Normalizing water operations for municipal utility, our utility operations include methods to incentivize the prompt payment for delinquent water charges, including the imposition of late payment fees and the issuance of disconnection notices to alert customers about potential service termination for non-payment. In July two thousand twenty-four, while city council approved the policy on the discontinuation of residential water services for non-payment with an effective date of January two thousand twenty-five, additionally, direction was given for staff to study and return at a future meeting to report on the city's ability to collect delinquent water charges through the annual property tax roll as an alternative to water shut-offs. The staff, including the city attorney's office, has since researched what this process would entail. I would now like to lend the mic over to our city attorney, Richard Padilla, to explain.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Melton. Under the California Health and Safety Code, there is authority for public agencies to collect delinquent water accounts via the tax roll. That is under Health and Safety Code fifty, fifty-four seventy-three A and fifty-four seventy-three. In order to do so, however, we would need, the city would need, as part of the Prop two eighteen process, to invoke its right under a provision called the Omnibus Prop two eighteen Act that reserves itself the right to collect delinquent water fees on the tax roll. That is typically done, however, incident to either the establishment of new water rates or when you're increasing water rates. So at the present time, I don't believe we have the authority or we formally invoke that authority to do so. It is not, there are not a lot of cities that collect delinquencies like this on the tax roll, but there are cities that do. It might be interesting to kind of reach out to them and find out what their experience is. I think you also need to kind of parse out a few details here. A lot of the water shut-off protections that have been discussed in the staff report and previously are applicable only to residential water service accounts. They do not apply, they have no applicability to business waters, water accounts by businesses or anything that is non-residential. So there is a little more leeway as a city for us to come up with collection strategies without having to jump through a lot of hurdles when it comes to non-residential, non-residential customers. Now, we should also kind of distinguish the idea that, you know, what, as to residential, what the state is trying to do is to prevent water shut-offs that could create undue hardship, perhaps even health and safety issues. The collection of the fee, the delinquency on the tax roll, though, is not really an event that will result in a water shut-off. I mean, the two do not go hand in hand. You could see, you could have a situation where the tenant water customer, residential tenant water customer is unable to pay. You could certainly afford them the opportunity to pay. But if those efforts are unsuccessful, or as a complement to those efforts, you could still reserve yourself the right to collect the money from the residential landlord, who is in the business of renting out property and, you know, I think some would say should be responsible as a backstop for the non-payment of water, water service that actually makes their property habitable. But for water service, they would not be able to rent out their property. So that's kind of my thirty thousand-foot view of explanation here. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. To summarize, we also incorporated a table of pros and cons of both processes on page seven seventy-three of your packet, which again identifies a couple of factors that we compare for water shut-offs versus the property tax assessments. As Mr. Padilla discussed, the city would first need to invoke this provision. And that would, of course, elongate the collection of revenues for services rendered and allow continued ballooning of outstanding balances, which of course would just further disrupt cash flows over time. Water shut-offs do create a short-term disruption. While assessments are less disruptive in the shorter term, they do impose additional long-term risks through the property tax process. Additionally, the assessment process would shift the debt from the tenant, which is currently defined within our code right now, to the landlord or property owner, which would be a transition for the city. I do want to highlight that as of December thirtieth, there were nine hundred sixty-seven accounts with outstanding balances exceeding sixty days totaling seven hundred, over seven hundred ninety-two thousand. So of course, our objective at this point is to determine the best course of action in order to recover as much of the revenues of the city with consideration of, again, some of the needs of our residents as well as our business customers. Per the city council direction, we were, we have gotten the approval of the water shut-off, the city's water shut-off policy. However, prior to initiating water shut-offs through the city policy, which became effective January first, staff has returned this item for further discussion and consideration of if an assessment process would be an alternative approach for collecting delinquent water account charges. This concludes staff's report. At this time, we welcome your questions.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Well, I think that we have a lot of procedures in here to help residents who need help. And I think that's what we wanted to do. If they need a payment plan, we work with them. If they just reach out and say, I'm struggling with this, I need help, we will do that for them. I was not, and still am not in favor of starting to put, you know, I don't know if leans is the right word, but dealing with their property tax and charging that. And we kind of went through that process a little bit with the Republic Services, it's a public hearing, and then you have a lot of conflict between the landlord and the renter. And there's just a lot of ambiguity. So I am not in favor of going the route of putting that on their property. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I have concerns about, you know, the residents also, if they have family or kids under five, that can be hard on them if we implement this shut-off. I'm not sure if that is legal, if you, there is a family and, you know, in a hard situation and we go to this process, like Councilmember Garcia say, you know. I would like to see more options to support the residents and before we do any implementation on this.
Councilmember Fajardo?
I feel that we are running out of options in order to be able to collect this. And I understand that having assessments on properties would be a, a very strong step, and it wouldn't bode well with some people. But I believe that if the outstanding balances accrue too much, and they probably are already at that point, we're essentially shifting the burden onto other households, some of whom are also struggling but make the payments. And I think that outreach only goes so far. While there are probably some people who are having financial challenges making the payments, there are others who simply might not necessarily feel the need. And at the very least, the assessment process does capture revenues from them. And sometimes they voluntarily come and become current on their accounts. I saw, I know that when we've sent out the notices of the assessments for Republic, there's usually a flurry of people who come forward and either come and implement a plan or actually bring the accounts in full. So I'm not sure if I'm understanding correctly, but what I've heard so far in the comments is not to go forward with the assessments and to look at alternate solutions, if my understanding is correct. I just don't know what alternate solutions exist at this point to, to really recapture that.
If I may, through the mayor, so actually, so council already approved, so for many, 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 many years, we've always, if someone is delinquent and their water bill, we've shut off their water bill, just like any other, any other utility. If you don't pay your electric bill, they shut off your electricity. If you don't pay your gas bill, you know, and so forth. So for many years, we've been shutting off, we shut off water. And we had, you know, ninety-eight percent compliance, right? We, and we worked with people whenever there was hardship. When, during COVID, as similar to what we had talked about with the, with the supporting businesses, by not charging for the, you know, closing down the outdoor market, one of the programs was to not disconnect residents due to non-payment. So the, so we stopped that during COVID. About a year ago, we brought that back to council to reinstate that process. And state law also, you know, again, it's always been allowed to disconnect their, their services. State law just made some additional, had some additional safeguards, but still said after, I believe, ninety days or sixty days? Sixty days past due, we can shut off. So we, instead of thirty days, we now give them sixty days, right? So that's, that's the only difference. We already got direction from council that was, that goes into effect on January first. So we will start, we already have done this process with commercial property owners and have brought them almost into full compliance. So this, this, and have, and Erica's team's been doing an amazing job doing outreach, coming in on Saturdays to set up payment plans. So worked with folks on financial hardships. And so she's done a lot of effort to get folks that do qualify for certain hardships signed up. We're already set to do some of the, the shut-offs. The only reason we're bringing this back is because when it came to council, I think back in July, there was direction that we should also just look at, we got direction to go forward with the shut-offs and approval, go forward with the shut-offs starting in January first, but also just look at what it would be to put the assessments on there. So this is just that, that second piece of it, of if there were assessments instead of the shut-off.
What percent do you think, though, will comply just based on the shut-offs versus the assessment? Because I feel like the assessment is, essentially ensures a hundred percent compliance, right? To an extent.
I would argue that not having water... I would argue that not having water, I mean, that's pretty, it's, it's a pretty strong deterrent for not getting, you know, if you don't pay your bill, you get shut off and you don't have water. So I think that brings a lot of people in to set up a payment plan. What I do think the, the advantage of, of the shut off is that it's a rolling 60 days as opposed to the assessment where someone could get a year plus in arrears and get into a very large amount of debt that they can not get out of. And then also from our operating standpoint, it, it really impacts our cash flow. If a lot of folks aren't paying, then we have to wait, you know, potentially 12 to 18 months to get paid. But we have already paid, you know, our staff and everything 18 months earlier as opposed to on the shut off process where you get paid typically within 60 days.
And city manager, if I may, the other major other impact is that shut offs impact the person who's using the water, the consumer, which again, from a residential standpoint, currently is the, the tenant, the person who's residing on the premises. If we go to assessments, it impacts the property owner who may or may not live there. And again, it happens months later, if not a whole year later.
Yeah, I guess my thinking is that I'm more concerned with, I shouldn't say more concerned, but I should say that I'm concerned about people living there not having water. And so at the very least, if someone is a renter and I don't know what the breakdown is of owners to renters, is it 60/40 or maybe 50/50, somewhere between 50/50 and 60/40? I, I would rather have the cost on a potentially wealthy property owner than on someone who's struggling with kids and that's why they haven't paid the bills. At the very least with the assessment, the water flow would still continue, the water service would still continue. I don't think that there's really a good option either way. But I at least feel that with the assessments, we are insured to have 100% payment. And in the event that, you know, there are small children in the household, there isn't any pause in water per se. But again, you know, I'm, I'm interested in hearing what the rest of my colleagues have to say because I'm not sure that there's a perfect solution to this.
May I just add one more comment? The update to the city's code also provides provisions for low income households. So for individuals who are under 200% of the poverty line, there are special provisions that are incorporated within there. So there are a number of additional, again, procedures that are in place in order to mitigate some of the issues with regards to individuals who are experiencing financial issues. In concert with that, as a result of some of the work that's been done, again, and I want to apply the finance utility billing team, because we've gotten over 125 residents on payment plans in order to ensure that water services are not disconnected on account of, again, outstanding balances. Our goal is to continue that because certainly our goal is not to disconnect anyone's water, but to ensure, again, that the city, again, is recovering. And we, again, utilizing some of the strategies that are both provided through the state's process. So I just wanted to comment on that as well. Vice Mayor Solaria?
Thank you. And I think just to clarify, so because we have, our council has approved the shut off previously, that means when would that, when would they start again?
We would be putting those in place at the end of the month. So starting at the end of the month, we would be beginning that process. We are having another Saturday on January 18th in which we are going to be open to assist those who can't make it to City Hall during the week in order to assist individuals both with coming in to make payment, payment as well as payment arrangement plans. We issue letters to those individuals who have outstanding balances. We are also in coordination with the Business and Community Resource Center, and they'll be open on that same date so that if individuals require additional social services, resources beyond, again, just the payment arrangement plan, we'll be having that staff on hand in order to assist with that process as well.
And then just to further clarify, when you say end of month, you, does that mean end of month people will be shut off? Or end of month, 60 days?
End of month notifications with regards to, they receive a tag at that time that they need to come in, which is a seven day notice. Come to the city hall. Because again, a lot of times it's usually, again, we've experienced where people have moved in and the prior person hasn't, the, the account is in the prior person's name and they, because the bill is to person A and not person B, they just haven't paid. And so once they receive that notice, it's again, a, a trigger that they need to come in and at least get the account in their name so that they can ensure that water is not disconnected. And again, it creates that communication with the city so that we have the account under the right individual's name.
Then the shut off would happen approximately around a week after?
Correct.
And then just to add on then to, for the assessments, is the suggestion then or a recommendation would be that the assessments are added on top of the shut off or instead of?
Certainly, we welcome city council's direction. The goal was to bring forth the information because the inquiry that we received was as an alternative to water shut offs. Within the information we provided, we have seen that other cities do it in addition to. However, the inquiry that we were specifically given was with regards to as an alternative to. So we've provided information that allows both to be considered and explored.
Yeah, for example, there is one city, I believe it's Hesperia, that in its code, it has a lot of the standard water shut off protection language. But it also does have a provision that says, you know, when, when balances just become really high, they reserve the right to collect that delinquency via the tax roll. So I think what's important to understand is that, I mean, you could certainly choose one over the other, but they can also work hand in hand. I mean, you, you can have a situation where you attempt at least first to work with the tenant who, to hopefully try and collect the money. But if that's unsuccessful, you always have the backstop of putting it on, on the tax roll to get it at least from the landlord. Now, where it becomes tricky is if the, if the property owner is, and is the water consumer as well, because then I think you also have to kind of factor in the idea that you want to offer them relief before you pull the trigger of assessment. Although you could theoretically do an assessment, as long as it doesn't result in a water shut off, which again, you know, putting it on the tax roll doesn't necessarily trigger a water shut off event. If anything, it probably gets rid of it, gets rid of that likely.
Yeah, and I think that as of now, my, you know, my direction would be in, that we continue since we've already approved the water shut offs. And if council then is open to a tax assessment, I think that we can further evaluate whether, what is like the limit or where, how much the amount might be. Also, if we're going to go ahead and put that on occupants versus the, because it's going to go to the landowner. So is there a method, Erica, that we have to see if it's an occupant of the household or are there landowners as well?
Absolutely, we can ensure that that information is provided. I also do want to highlight that we are in the midst of, we did an RFP for water and sewer rate study, which is part of Prop 218 anyway. And so what, what we could potentially do is at the time when we bring back the outcome of that study, we could have this additional information. It'll give us an opportunity to at least initiate water shut offs and be able to provide information about how the process has been operating in conjunction with, again, bringing back additional information so that if council wants to invoke it, again, instead of doing two different processes, perhaps it can be invoked at that time concurrently.
And I would submit that it, it actually should be folded into that process in order to do that. So right now, there's nothing we could do anyway, even, even if you wanted to put it on the assessment rule. So that, I, I think that would be a great idea is to have that come back as part of that overall process. Doesn't mean you have to accept it at that time, but at least it's, it's there to at least be considered by the group.
Thank you. Yeah, I think at this time, I don't know that we want to risk the long term of collection, meaning like 18 months down the line, like we mentioned where we've already paid our staff, we've already done the work. And I think that staff has done an incredible job to provide options to our residents. And like we said, right, nobody wants to shut off water for anyone. But I think that at this point, it sounds like we're bringing in our residents and having those conversations and they've become very helpful to them because now they're able to make some sort of payment or payment plan. So those are my comments. Thank you so much.
I think, you know, I think that we've, staff has done a tremendous job in reaching out to our residents. And you have been for the past four years, since 2020, since we had COVID. And, you know, I wish Councilmember Lopez was here because she's missed part of what was done. Because we did have, use ARPA funds to fund some of the, the water bill. Well, no, this was, this was actually metropolitan water. But we did have some reimbursements from the state. How much was that funded from the state for, for water bills that were in arrears, right?
Yes, we received, I believe, over $600,000 that was applied to a variety of water bills, both on the residential and commercial side. That's one of the reasons that once we reported in July, it was lower because again, in a number of cases, it was individuals who, again, weren't able to pay. However, again, through the water re-ridge program, which we applied for through the state water board's ARPA funds, essentially, we were able to cover water bills that were unpaid up to a certain period. However, again, since that time of that July report, again, bills have, again, continued to accrue by an additional 134,000 since the last time of our reporting.
134,000. So that was 600,000 that was already covered by the state and we got reimbursed. That was in arrears and now we're at another 600,000. So staff has done a great deal. And then they've applied for other programs as well to get assistance.
That's correct. We, there was, there were other programs through other foundations that were available. They were very time sensitive and so we worked with a number of them in order to even assist residents with applications, even going so far as to work with our local UPS to make sure that they were received on time. And through those programs, the city did receive additional funding, again, for residents to pay water bills also during that time.
And you came in on the weekend to assist those?
Yes, in fact, those services were offered at our local, our rec park facility in order to make it even easier for individuals to contact us.
And that was one-on-one assistance with the residents? And, and you also, and also, some of those also included commercial?
Yes, the water re-ridge program included commercial.
Yeah, so it was not only that, but now we have an additional amount of, of funds that we, we are not collecting, that were in arrears. So now they have, you know, they have 90 days that they, they're, that they don't have, they're not paying their water bill. They have 90 days and then their water will be shut off at that point, would be 90 days, right?
That's correct. So after the 90th day is when they received essentially the notification of, of potential termination. And again, that is after they've received notifications through their normal billing process. They'll also receive a first and second delinquency notice. And then finally, if it has not been paid, again, after that 90th day, they'll receive a door tag, which, which is the notification that they've got seven days before those process, procedures commence.
And you know, the, the reason I don't want to go through the assessments, you know, maybe it might be good to have it as a backup possibly in the future if needed. But I'm not really for the assessments because when we had the Republic Services that were in arrears, we didn't use them. You know, we didn't, we had that option to use it to collect that money for those, that were not paying their trash bills. And we, we didn't use it. So I don't see the purpose of having it for the water. If, if depending on the council, they don't have the vote to, to assign those debts to, to the tax assessors. So I, I don't see the purpose of, of doing that either. But also the funding that we get, the, the funds that we get, when they pay their bills, what is, what are those funds used for? What, what do we use to pay when we, we collect our water bills?
Sure, that's used to pay operating costs as well as future capital cost. So the objective is to ensure that we can, of course, operate our facilities, ensure that we've got sufficient staff to operate those facilities. And as we are aware, we've had a number of capital upgrades that have transpired. And so ensuring that we've got staff with a skill level in order to operate those facilities as well as the technology to do so is, is imperative.
So it helps maintain our wells and provide our residents with good, safe drinking water, right? So collecting that, our water fees is important, right? How does that affect our future, the future cost of our water in the future? Would this potentially, could it, would it?
From a cost recovery standpoint, the, of course, the objective is to ensure that at least our baseline operating costs recovered. So that's number one, the number one objective. However, of course, the objective is that we want to ensure we've got enough so that we can do future maintenance and cost for additional upgrades to facilities. So the answer is yes.
And if I may, just on that, directly to your question, we can only charge, we can only basically be reimbursed for what it costs us. But ultimately, if we have a large uncollected debt, we would still have to pay the staff members that are, the 12 staff members, we'd still have to buy salt. We'd still have to make sure that, to, for the purification and chlorination procedure, all the chemicals that we need to make sure we have clean water. We'd still have to run all the maintenance on, on the treatment plants. So ultimately, the, the general fund, and this has certainly happened in other communities, the general fund would have to backstop to make that hole if we were not collecting. If we get into a situation where we're not getting enough revenue because we have a large unpaid debt to be able to offset that. So we're not in that position yet. We want to obviously avoid that. But that would be the backstop ultimately. What would be the long-term consequence of sustained non-collection would be that we'd have to use general tax dollars, which are used for, you know, public works and police, you know, police services and all the other services that we have would need to be used to pay for water operations.
You know, and, and I certainly don't want, you know, I don't want to shut people's water off. You know, I think that, you know, it's important for our residents and our commercial businesses to have water. But, you know, we've been discussing a water shut off since like, at least for quite some time. But since summer, we've been talking about shutting it off. And we've, we've been putting it off and been putting it off. And all that has, has been happening is that our residents' bill has been going up and up and up. And, and just increases. And what happens is that just makes it more difficult. I know if I've had a bill, you know, I'm just thinking of myself. If your bill goes higher, it just makes it more impossible to catch up. To me, that's a disservice. We're doing a disservice to our residents and our commercial businesses. How are they going to catch up? If they're have, you know, my monthly bill is $200 a month. The next bill is going to be another, the next bill I get is another 200, two months, you know, later, another 400, 600. So how do you catch up when you've got a bill that's just growing, you know, $200 every month? So to me, that's a disservice. And if it's only 400, it's easier to catch up. If you, you shut it off, you shut my water off sooner and I kind of figure out how I'm going to pay that bill. But you let me go for six months, eight months, that's going to be really hard to catch up. So for me, it's a disservice that if we let it move on, you know, go on this long and if we continue it. So I, and I, so I don't approve, you know, I don't, that's, that's what I have to say. So anyway, so let's go for another round, I think, so we can just give our final thoughts. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we have worked really hard to make sure we're offering everything available to our residents. So I just, and I, so from what I'm, from what I'm recalling, what I understand, we wiped clean everyone's water bill a few years ago, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we paid, we got state funds, we paid off water bills. Some people continue to not pay. And I also think like, if you don't get charged a late fee and nothing happens, like, sometimes you just don't pay. I remember I was like, oh, no late fees, I can do it next week, you know, or, and that can compound, I think. But, okay, so my understanding is they have, it's not just seven days before your water gets turned off. Can you clarify, it's, it's, it's delinquent when, on the due date?
It's not delinquent until 60 days past the due date. So if you get your water bill, it's due 30 days afterwards, but it's not delinquent and we, that trigger doesn't actually start till another 60 days technically. So then it's in total 90 days before we issue the shut off notice. So then it's in total ninety days before we issue the shut-off notice. And again, there's other things that are happening in between. Um, in addition to that, um,
Your bill tells you pay within thirty days?
The bill tells you if you're, you got your bill on?
Get your bill, it says due date, it's thirty days later, is that right?
That's correct.
And then if you don't pay, you get additional notices the next sixty days, is that right?
That is correct. Along with now late fees that are imposed, because we had not been imposing late fees, uh, since against the, uh, the pandemic also. So in addition to that, it's your penalty, so you get notified that you're now late. Here goes a delinquency notice, that's the first one. You also get a second delinquency notice that, that after the next thirty days. After that time, you receive, um, you receive the shut-off notification as a door hanger, which then says you've got seven days to come in. So in total, it's almost a hundred days.
And, and it should be noted that during that period, the city is required to affirmatively notify these, these, uh, consumers that, that we are willing to work with them, that we are willing to offer, uh, alternative payment plans. So really, uh, you would probably only get to a water shut-off with someone who just completely blows you off and just has no intention of working with you whatsoever.
But if anytime someone says, I, I just don't have the money right now, then you'll say, okay, let's work out a payment plan and it stops the water shut-off, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay, yes, I, I, do we have also discretion to waive any fees, is that possible?
Yes, the late fees, fees and penalties, we do have discretion to waive those.
Okay, and, um, and do we have discretion to waive the cost of, um, turning back water on? If they work with us?
We, we have, once the water is disconnected, that means that we did all of these steps and they did not come in. Now, there is a cap in terms of, uh, we do have two distinct fees. So the water disconnection fee is approved through the water rate, I'm sorry, through the fee schedule, uh, which was approved, I believe, in August.
Just as a cost?
That's the one where we studied the, the time, the cost in terms of staff time that it takes, because we now have to send staff out there to, number one, turn off the, the meter and lock it. And then we have to send them back out to, to turn it back on. Um, so there is staff time that we are recovering as a result of that. So it is a sixty-five dollar fee, however, it is capped at fifty dollars for low-income individuals.
But is there discretion at all to waive that?
I will double-check and confirm, I don't believe, uh, that there is discretion that we provided within the update to the code, but I can-
Can it be rolled into a payment plan?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then when water shut-offs existed, I heard there was something like, basically a hundred percent of people paid their water bill, is that right?
That's correct, we were probably at ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent. Um, so for the most part, people came in within twenty-four hours in order to, uh, pay the bills. A lot of them came in, again, before the seven days and the remainder came in immediately following. So the answer is yes.
And, and now we offer more, right? What, what we did was we were required by the state to do certain things, but we went above and beyond. We said not going to be thirty days, we're going to do thirty plus sixty and we're going to do payment plans and we're going to work with anyone who needs help, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, no.
Uh, Councilmember Fajardo? Vice Mayor Solorio?
No additional comments, thank you.
I have no additional comments, so.
And this is a, this was a staff direction item, so the direction that staff heard is that we will move forward as previously directed by city council and, uh, provide an upstate, and we'll provide an update on outstanding balances um, during the consideration of the water and sewer fee, uh, study, which will also consider the Prop two eighteen. And that should probably be in the next, you know, year or so. Um, so I mean, we'll, so we'll have a lot, a, a better update.
Okay, thank you.
But Madam Mayor, uh, can we clarify, so are we going forward now there's late fees and the process is going forward with shut-off?
We're just moving forward with the process?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
Right, we're at, uh, number fourteen, we're done, so now we're at, item number fifteen, discussion and consideration regarding the report by Chief Aldiz on recent cases. This was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez, pass this on to you.
Um, yes, the reason that I, uh, I have this in the agenda, because I, like I say, on December, I received several, uh, comments from the residents and, and that, um, business owners about, you know, they would like to see more patrolling in the business area. Sometimes they come early in the morning and they notice there is some cars in the parking lot. And they feel like if it's more patrolling in the, um, business, that can be, be helpful for them and be more, you know, more aware of the people. They would, they would, they would like to see the patrolling more often in the business area. And I just want to say thank you so much for the newsletter, that was amazing. And I have a question for you, if you, you planning to have that bilingual? The ones we receive it, no, not yet?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and, and Councilmember, uh, Lopez. With respect to your, your question, um, I mean, we, we could draft something in, in Spanish. Of course, that would, um, you know, require the translation and, and sometimes things don't quite translate the same. But, you know, we could definitely make an effort to, to create that newsletter in Spanish. That newsletter, however, the intention initially was it, what was, that it was to be an internal newsletter for the department to, um, for other members of the department to know what was going on with, again, team members. Um, and, uh, it was very successful in the sense that, uh, that, that, there, there were some good things being done. So it, the newsletter evolved, uh, into now us sharing it at the public, uh, the Transportation and Public Safety Commission meeting, as well as, uh, providing a newsletter to the city council. So that the city council is aware of some of the things that are going on within the police department. Um, I would, I would meet with the city manager and discuss, you know, the pros and cons to that. But, uh, it's not necessarily a community letter, it's more of an internal newsletter, but provided to the council as well. Um, but we do provide other information, uh, to, to the community through, uh, the bi-weekly reports and the city, city manager's monthly reports, as well as, um, uh, social media and, uh, the Community Academy chats with the chief, uh, meetings with other community groups. And so I, I think, you know, that there are different avenues where, that we can provide Spanish, uh, uh, information to what is going on at the police department in Spanish. Um, however, again, we, we would, um, I would just want a little more direction with respect to what it is you would like to see.
Well,
Oh, sorry, uh, and if I may just real quick, just specifically on the language access piece. Um, so we had, had, uh, discussion with council, I mean, about a year ago, and we piloted having translation services here and, um, and translating certain official notices, uh, into Spanish. Um, so the budget that we have now for translation services is really based on, um, primarily the translation services at council meetings and then, um, some limited, um, translation of notices, uh, city notices. Um, we have not translated the, you know, chief's newsletter or the city manager's report or a lot of those community newspapers, um, simply because we don't have the budget, um, to do that. And, and quite frankly, uh, the, it does take a, a time to do that. So if we were, to the extent we were going to translate, you know, it would probably take about a week. It would delay sort of issuance by a week. So we can certainly, if that's, um, you know, a, a discussion council wants to have on, um, and we can certainly have that during the budget, if we wanted to add to the budget to translate more of our documents into Spanish. Um, but I would just say that wasn't one that was identified because it's more of an internal document and because, um, uh, again, just the, the cost to translate something that's, you know, five or six pages, um, long.
And my apologies to disclose this, but it was really good news, you know, to have this, um, uh, newsletter. I believe the community will appreciate it if we cannot do like seven pages, but maybe just a, a debrief, especially for the business area, uh, that can be really, um, helpful, right? And, and they want to be, be connected more with our police department. And like, like I say, they'd like to see more patrolling in the areas. And that, that it will be, that it was my comment in this. And like I say, since I, I get elected, I, I express myself that I want to be a strong voice for the, the, on the business and the residents. So that's what I, I express myself today on that.
And if I may, Councilmember Lopez, just real quick, we do share a lot of the information that the chief shared in that little newsletter. We actually, he puts quite a bit of that also in the city manager's monthly newsletter, which is provided, um, community-wide. And actually, uh, he did mention the social media, but I do want to do another plug. It, it's, um, San Fernando P D on Instagram and they take, they take those stories, um, instead of having them in the newsletter, they're broken apart and, and we do put those stories onto different Instagram and social media posts. Um, so all of that information that was in that newsletter is, we do break that up and get it out to the community because it is really, really great information.
And I just want to add that we've recently, um, established a stronger relationship with, uh, uh, our, our Spanish-speaking, uh, television networks. And, um, they actually showcased an operation that we conducted over at the Target and it was done in Spanish. And again, the intention is not only to ensure that our community is aware of what's going on, but specifically that our Spanish-speaking community understands what is going on in San Fernando. So with respect to, uh, engaging the media, we are intentionally, uh, also engage, engaging, uh, our Spanish-speaking media as well.
Well, I look forward to see the report maybe in the near future, uh, because I know, um, Member Solorio requested that before, right?
Yes, and that will be, you know, February third, we're going to have a pretty in-depth, um, presentation on, um, statistics over the last year, as well as a, a presentation on Prop thirty-six and immigration and the number of things. So, um, we wanted to hear what you had to ask, um, your comments tonight so that we can make sure we roll any, what you're interested in as well into that presentation. So that will be on February third for,
Okay.
audiences.
All three?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Garcia, have any comments on?
Uh, yes, please, I was just going to say, I, I have noticed there's like an incredible amount of interest in, like, police department happenings, maybe because it's crime and it affects certain neighborhoods. So I do know that, because I served on the Transportation and Public Safety Commission and they, um, especially Sergeant Woodward, give like an incredible amount of information and detail about the things that have happened. And it's very, um, consumable, it's very like neighbor-friendly. Um, I, I think actually there's a, a, quite a few seniors who will watch it to stay updated on what's happening in the city. So maybe we promote that or maybe we think about a long-term, what is there a way to connect people? Maybe there is a, like a little update newsletter, we can think about that. I think we're having a February priorities meeting or something, maybe we can talk about how, you know, to keep people engaged. And maybe it is inviting them to the Transportation and Public Safety Commission or something to that effect. But I will just echo that I, there is, and when I was on it, I just felt so updated on everything that was happening in the city because it's like so many bullet points.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, uh, I, my perception is that people feel fairly well-informed. And if we want to add ways to make them more informed, I'm okay with that. You know, there's no harm in having more clarity, more information, more sources, because maybe the sources that we do offer, people aren't familiar with, so having another source. Uh, what I normally hear is that people want changes, and they're not always major changes, but again, it's the additional patrolling, um, it's, you know, additional police officers. Uh, and so a lot of those items, I think, are really at the forefront or what people are asking for. But the more transparency we have in government, the better. I think the fact that some of our, uh, our operations were actually, uh, broadcast is very impressive. I'm not really sure when that's happened during my tenure on the city council, so I was happy to see that. And overall, though, people feel very engaged with our police department, I think that's a great thing. Uh, one thing that I would like us to do though, since it relates to this, and I think I mentioned it at the December meeting, is that it would be helpful for the city council and community to have additional information on how Prop forty-six enhances safety and what differences there's going to be in enforcement of laws, interpretation of laws and so forth.
Councilmember Fajardo, uh, I'm glad you brought that up and, and that's kind of a, a softball request in the sense that after we had our, uh, meeting in December, I reached out to our, uh, local, our, our newly-elected district attorney. And I am working to actually get him here,
Wow.
on February third, so that all of you can direct, so that he could provide a, a presentation, but also you can, you, direct your questions to him. If he can't make it, he's definitely going to send one of his, uh, one of his adjuncts to come in. But, uh, the goal is to get him here on February third.
That's wonderful, and I think that, that will be a tremendous benefit. Uh, hopefully, we see crime addressed a little more thoughtfully in the state. I understand that, did I say Prop forty-six, I think it was Prop thirty-six, correct? Yeah, I mean, it was thirty-six or forty-seven, I was conflating the two. Um, and you guys can just jump in and correct me, don't feel that you have to, um, uh, boost my ego by letting me have false information up here. But, uh, you know, I, I think that there was such, there was so much passion and spirit behind Prop forty-seven to try and correct past injustices and unfortunately just didn't pan out the way that voters had intended. So hopefully, this will bring a little bit more balance to our criminal justice system, while understanding that there's still areas that we need to make improvements on. So, um, no, those are my comments overall. If we're going to have more communication, more transparency with the police, I think that's great. I'm actually going to comment on my closing comments on one of the issues that the lady, that the speaker's brought forward today with regards to police in schools, because I think that's important, but it's not germane enough to this topic. So I will wait for closing council comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Yes, thank you, um, yeah, and I, um, I just want to add, I think, um, I caught the end of it, um, Nick, and you can clarify, that in the budget, we don't have money at this time to translate, um, any of the information, like, updates of the police department, was that correct?
Right, so like the, like the newsletter, like the large documents?
Right, and I think that, you know, I, I agree also with Councilmember Fajardo in terms of like, um, engagement and like transparency and just having it available for our Spanish-speaking community. So I'm wondering, you know, during our budget session, if we could bring this specific item back in adding an additional, um, you know, resource, right, in terms of funds, in order to make Spanish translation for our police department? Because I do believe that engagement with our police department is for all residents, right? Especially, and, and especially in communities that, um, only speak Spanish. I think sometimes, um, there is a, hmm, I guess I don't know how to put it, but like, not a misrepresentation of how the police acts, but I think maybe a misunderstanding of what they believe a police officer is there to do, right? And I think the more information that we do provide in Spanish to them helps them, I think, see the police department in a different light and also encourages them to call into the department and say, hey, this is what's happening in our community and build those relationships with those residents as well. So I do believe that it's important, um, so I think, uh, Councilmember Lopez for bringing that up. And I want to say that it'd be great to bring it back and see how much money that's going to cost us in order to, even if we did it quarterly, I don't know how often we would do it, but, um, I'd like to have that come back, thank you.
I, I don't have any additional comments, so, so we can, no other comments on this item? All right, so we'll move on to item number sixteen, which is discussion and consideration regarding business grants distribution over the last four years. This item was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez.
Uh, and I should review, it was, um, I, my intent was to have this information from, from, uh, uh, Nick, but I believe it wasn't enough time. So I don't know if you had that information?
Um, so typically, uh, what we'll do when, when a council member, just a matter of process, whenever any council member requests a, um, an agenda item before staff, because staff is not supposed to take direction from one council member on doing a significant amount of work. So what we do is we have it come to city council, and if at least three other council members want more of that same information, then we'll, then we'll dedicate staff time to bring that back as a full report. I would say if, if that's just, if, if it's the, if your information, if the request is just what business grants the city has provided over the last four years, we have given a number of reports over the last four years that we, you know, to city council that we can certainly provide to you, if that's what, um, you know, that, that, that we can certainly do, that doesn't take any extra effort. If it's a discussion you wanted to have at city council, we would just need to have the direction, um, of what it is that you wanted to discuss, and then what information you'd want to come back, and then what the ultimate direction that you would want to come out of that discussion would be.
Well, I, my same, more specific, I was more interested to see the grants that was provided during the pandemic for the local business and see how we can help them in the future, right? Something similar on the face.
So we could certainly, and again, um, I can, we can get you the information and then you can look at it and maybe then make a decision. But we do have, uh, I think over the pandemic, the council approved about $40,000, forty, $10,000 grants, so that was all in one staff report. We can get that to you so you can see who received those. And then we have a small business grant that comes forward, and that, that is actually in, that information is in, um, we presented it on November 25th to council on what those guidelines were. And we, in the priorities and the project updates staff report, we also have information on those grants, uh, that grant program moving forward.
I look forward more to, to have like a presentation because I have several, uh, businesses, this, uh, they come and they didn't know the process, how to apply for those grants. So if you, we can do the presentation, and I know, maybe we'll be another.
I would, uh, what I would say would be, or what I would recommend, because, um, we just did the presentation about a month ago, I would recommend, um, if anyone reaches out to you because they are, I mean, we're still taking applications, right, for the, we haven't even opened it yet. So any, anyone that you hear from, we haven't advertised yet on how to, how to do it. So how to, how to advertise, uh, how to apply. So if you want to just, um, anyone that you hear from, connect with Kanika, and we can make sure, and even if they're Spanish speaking, you know, we can, we'll, we'll have, um, uh, we'll be able to facilitate that, but we can have Kanika, um, we'll explain to them the process for applying.
Yeah, but I, I, I wanted to be more transparent on this because I just wanted to, the whole, well, the whole city to know the process.
Yeah.
Because if I, I refer one, and one, it will take a lot.
Sure.
Instead of make up another presentation, maybe not, maybe not in this month, maybe not in March per se? Or I don't know, what is that, uh, time for, for the application? How the grants work?
So, uh, so again, we, we did just do the full presentation, what was it, November 18th?
I don't remember exactly when, but it was early November.
Second meeting in November. So if council wants, we can give that presentation again.
Well, if we already did it, then they, they can look back at that, uh, that meeting, you know, and maybe, um, uh, Councilmember Lopez can meet with staff, make an appointment with, to meet with staff, and they can go over the items that were discussed, yeah, on the loans and the requirements and explain it to her and, and, um, they can come in, they, they're, you know, the staff is there to work with them on the applications as well, and for any questions they might have, because we've, we've already done it. So, um, that's my thoughts on that. Councilmember Garcia? I mean, I, I just don't think in repeating the, the information, because we do need to, you know, utilize our time well, uh, as a council.
So maybe we can provide Councilmember Lopez with that information, and then if, you know, what you said, thought of an idea for me, do we want to have a presentation here for the small businesses, how to apply, what's available? That might be an outreach. Or how do we, um, like if they want to come in and say, uh, if we say, hey, we're doing a small business grant, learn more on this day at this time, that might be a way of getting the information out in English and Spanish. And, um, and, and that would be kind of a good idea.
The worship.
Like, yeah, like. Because, I'll say this, I actually walked the first business grant, I got, um, the city made little, like, kind of like the Instagram post or the flyers, and I walked, I don't know where it was, I walked down San Fernando Road and gave it to them, and like, nobody knew about it. And, um, so just a way to get more people aware of it and say, it's definitely open for you. Like, you're here, you're eligible, apply, here's how.
So I was.
Come to the kiosk or come to Kanika.
I was asking Kanika what we're doing. So, I mean, we're, we're gonna do the same, like, we have Icon CDC and, and we'll.
Stationed in the Business Center.
Business.
Maybe we do like a little workshop, a little one hour.
And we're gonna do the same thing as last time, go, like, pass out, like, door to door to a lot of those, like, similar to what you did, um, for last time. So, um, we do have, we haven't started outreach for that yet because we haven't opened the application period yet. But we do have, plan to have a significant outreach, and that's where, I think, we, that's how all council members can sort of help us get that word out, right, is, um, how to apply, here's, you know, here's a flyer, this is where the application is. We do have Icon CDC that, that will assist any businesses, um, particularly Spanish speaking businesses, that's sort of one of their specialties, on how to apply for those, um, those grants. We, we definitely have a robust outreach plan, um, for those, when those applications do open. So, um, we, again, if council wants, we can give a, we can give a presentation on the outreach plan, um, if council wants us to, to do that at a council meeting, you know.
I don't think we need more information necessarily. We can direct our, our colleague here to it, but do we want to do like a 30-minute, uh, either open house or little presentation for the businesses? Because when I went to them, they did not know any, and it's like $10,000.
It's just getting the word out. I think that's important to get the word out.
I feel like that's the case with.
Councilmember Fajardo?
I feel like that's the case with a lot of programs, and, uh, every program we've ever had, we always get either residents or businesses say that they didn't feel that there was enough outreach. I'm not sure when we've actually ever had anyone say, you did the exact sufficient level of outreach. And so I would worry about invest, obviously, we want to make sure that we're doing the most that we can, but I would worry about investing too much time with trying to reinvent the wheel if the wheel is, you know, working fairly well. If it's, if it's, if there are defects in our outreach process, then we should obviously correct it immediately, but I just think that it's, it's a challenge with every program that we have. Even with the veterans banners, when it first came out, a lot of criticism until like, people are kind of like in the rhythm of it now, but even then, criticism of it, despite it being a great program, like, oh, they didn't know about it on time, they didn't know, like, when there were fee waivers that were out. And so, um, it's been with most programs.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Thank you. Um, I think just a general question for Kanika, then, do you have, I think, just an overall plan of how outreach is conducted at this time? And, um, I, I somewhat imagine that, like, we already have our business watch meetings consistently here. So I'm wondering if, like, that's a part of, you know, the business outreach or will present during one of those meetings.
Yeah, so, um, for the last round of the grant application, we had a much shorter time for outreach, so our outreach last year probably is not going to be as robust as we're, we're planning to do this year. This year, we're gonna be working with Icon to help do more direct outreach to businesses. So we'll be going door to door to all the businesses in the city, um, passing out the flyers and connecting them to the big VCRC. We're also gonna be, um, coordinating with our police department during the business watch to, um, attend those meetings and announce the grant opening and let them know that, um, Icon office hour is Thursday morning weekly to help you apply for the grant application. And we also gonna be, do, taking an appointment for them to come and work with us when Icon is not available. And we'll be also, um, advertising through our social media, um, and we do, will be, um, so at the last round of application, we had around 30 application. So we will be directing, um, reaching out directly to them to let them know it's open and see how we can help them as well.
Thank you, yeah, that clarifies a lot, I think, in terms of like what outreach is gonna look like. And I, I wonder if that's what, you know, Councilmember Lopez was looking for, just more of a direct approach of what our outreach is gonna look like and who are we gonna inform? Those are all my comments for now, no questions.
All right. Is that enough, um, direction on that?
Uh, yeah, so I think just, um, from that, what we, what we'll do is we'll provide Councilmember Lopez, um, more information on the November 25th, so she can at least see what the, the guidelines are for this upcoming grant. We'll just give some information on the, you know, the COVID grants too, um, what we already have prepared, we can provide that. And then, um, what I'd like to do is that on the next bi-weekly city manager's email, which will be two weeks from last Friday, um, we'll include, I'll have Kanika prepare an outreach plan, and so we'll include the outreach plan with some dates and, and, um, and start, if we start putting out that material so that we are advertising everything. So, um, and then we welcome any, any thoughts on how to better get the word out.
I'll just say, for the record, it sounds like we don't have three votes, but I was in favor of doing like a 30-minute presentation here, um, for outreach and explaining what a business grant is, how to apply, who to reach out to.
Thanks, so, um, we're now on the next item, which is the, um, uh, staff communications, including commission updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll start the city clerk's office.
Uh, thank you. No updates to report, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council. Just two quick announcements. Well, actually, first, we want to welcome back our community. We hope they had an excellent and enjoyable holiday season. Happy New Year to everyone. But, uh, two, two quick things, uh, we're still, um, running registrations for academic art classes at Las Palmas. It is a 10-week session, Wednesdays from, uh, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, very popular program. And also, uh, registrations on Mission City, uh, Spring League. Please, uh, register before January 31st in order to get a discount. And this, um, uh, Mission City Baseball League is for ages 3 to 14. And also, just really quick, wanna thank our staff that worked during the holiday break, especially, uh, during winter camp and the, um, and the senior, uh, New Year, um, New Year dance. Uh, that shows, uh, uh, that shows how committed they are, and, and I want to thank them personally. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I want to start off the new year by apologizing for the mess we're about to make. Okay, we've got another capital project that's rolling out, and this involves all nine parking lots.
Wow.
In the downtown area. And what's gonna happen to, to those lots are gonna, first, they're gonna, uh, cut out the potholes and to fix them, and then 30 days is gonna pass, and people are gonna think, is that all they're gonna do? No. So we're gonna go out there and we're gonna fix the potholes that are in it, and the, the asphalt that's being used in the potholes, it needs to cure before we can go in there. And we're gonna, uh, fog coat the parking lots and stripe it. But, uh, but hopefully, this time next month, we're gonna have some real sharp-looking, uh, downtown, uh, parking lots for everyone to really, uh, spruce up the downtown area. As everyone survived the mess we made here at City Hall, as we were, uh, painting the building here, this is complete. We have some lettering that I have to run by my boss, and, uh, uh, we, we did the change with the, uh, San Fernando City Hall. I've got a couple of concepts to run by, by him, and so hopefully, uh, we'll be completing that project, uh, shortly, so.
Thank you. Good evening. Two quick updates for me. Um, one, just wanted to announce that we will be sending out a notice that our Planning and Preservation Commission meeting for this month is going to be rescheduled from the 13th to the 27th. So that notice will go out to the public this week. Also, wanted to announce that, um, in regards to our Climate Action and Resilience Plan, we do have a workshop that is scheduled for the 18th. There'll be some, um, social media and advertisements going out for that. It's on, uh, the 18th from 10 to 1:00 at Lane Park, and we'll be discussing climate impacts of extreme heat and air pollution, and we will be showing, um, how to measure heat and noise. Hope everybody wants to join us.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. Um, as mentioned earlier, on Saturday, January 18th, uh, the Finance, um, Office Division will be open, specifically our, uh, counter, uh, to accept, uh, additional payment arrangement plans to assist individuals with that, as well as to accept payments on water utility bills. For those who are having issues or, um, are, are struggling financially, again, we, uh, do have resources available. And in concert with our office, we will also be working in coordination with the Business and Community Resource Center. Uh, the Social Services Coordinator will also be available during that time, again, on Saturday, January 18th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, uh, to assist those who, uh, need additional resources. Thank you.
I have no update, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and, um, city council. Real briefly, I wanted to share that, uh, we are continuing our, uh, San Fernando Community Coalition to Prevent Gang, Gang Violence Meeting. Seems like our coalition is getting bigger. And, uh, again, this is all for the purpose of trying to address, um, gang violence and , and crime in general, uh, at, at, at its root causes. Uh, I'm, I'm proud to announce that, uh, LA Unified is a partner in our coalition. And I think with, uh, the public comment, uh, made today, uh, I, I think it really stresses the point that, uh, we need to look at school safety and community safety and, 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 and address the problems or the root causes of, uh, of crime. And in conjunction with that, um, I also wanted to share that beginning, uh, January 22nd, let me go back, uh, last week, I met with, uh, with school administration from, uh, San Fernando Middle School, and we have, uh, Community Academy that the middle school would like for the police department to host for parents and community members on campus. So, beginning January 22nd, between 5:30 PM and 7:30 PM, so Wednesday, we will, uh, the police department will be presenting a community, a ca, a community slash parent academy at the middle school. And again, this is to help address some of the problems that, um, bleed over from the community onto campus and vice versa. And that's it for me.
Um, I'll be quick. Um, I believe those that are going on the Hoover Dam Inspection Trip hosted by MWD should have received your, um, itineraries this week, that's, or today, that's a really great trip, um, for our community members and, and elected officials to go on to understand how our, our water works in California. Um, and then, uh, due to the MLK holiday on January 20th, our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, January 21st. So we will see you all in two weeks and a day. And that is it for staff communication.
There's now, uh, General City Council Board Member comments and liaison updates. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Um, I guess I just wanted to share, uh, very busy December. Last month, I attended the grand opening ribbon cutting of La Bella Pizza on McLeary, the VFW Job Fair, the tree lighting ceremony, and I was actually able to use, um, some of my community funds to give out 275 cups of hot cocoa. The grand opening ribbon, ribbon cutting of Bonita LA Hair Salon on Glen Oaks, the Business and Community Resource Center Open House, one-year anniversary, the grand opening ribbon cutting of Estes Express Lines, which is their San Fernando hub, but it's located in, um, Sun Valley. And I was connected to them because they actually came to our VFW Job Fair in San Fernando, and we're hiring people, um, for their, uh, their new station. The installation of officers of the San Fernando Masonic Lodge 343, um, the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce Greater Los Angeles Holiday Mixer, and I got to visit our police department on Christmas Day to thank them for working, and they work Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and I got to do a ride along with the chief. So after that, I took a little week break, um, and I'm looking forward to 2025. Also, when I said my thank yous on rejoining the city council, I forgot to men, to thank my husband and my kids, so I want to thank them, thank my, uh, you know, they're, they're, in reverse order of importance, was them, and then I'll say, you know. And then I'll say, you know, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for getting, standing me through that, because it was exhausting. But I love talking to people in our community and working with people. Thanks.
Councilmember Lopez?
Well, I just, December was a full of activities here in the city of San Fernando. And I remember every single one that I attend, but I, I was there supporting and I, I just wondered where was the photo for the Santa Claus? I couldn't find it. So that was great. I, I took a lot of times on December to visit some of the residents and the business. And I'm planning to visit the police department and see from inside, you know, how do you work with a, with a residence? And, you know, I want to be more involved. And I just want to say thank you to the staff. They're being really helpful and supporting me and, and since day one. And I look forward to be here and raise every single concern for the residents and the business. And I don't mind if I had to bring that issue one, two, a hundred times. Because if I don't understand, I'm sure some of the people that voted for me will appreciate it, because they don't understand. Sometimes the government can be really hard to navigate. So that's why I still, you know, want to bring those issues back. And I look forward to work with every single, all my colleagues here. And sometimes it's, it's hard for a woman like myself, right? And I'm just here to represent the residents.
Councilmember Farado?
Yes, wanted to welcome everyone back. Hopefully, twenty twenty-five is a phenomenal year. Twenty twenty-four was kind of a doozy. It had some ups and downs. But I have a lot of optimism that we're starting off on a fresh new year and that things are going to be great this year. With regards to one of the comments that was made at Public Comments, the speaker brought forward a very important issue, which is allowing police back on our campuses. And especially now that I'm a bit more involved with public schools, since my daughters go to public school and I tend to be involved with the school, there is extraordinary support, like overwhelming support. I don't know what percentile it is, but I'm guessing somewhere around the ninety something percentile of parents, including myself, who want to see police back on campuses. I was never one who wanted to see them off campuses, especially with the, the crime and violence that we see in our community these days. I think that most parents feel more assured knowing that there's a trained person on campus who can handle very dangerous situations. And I'm not sure what steps we can take as a city to help advance that cause to bringing police back to campuses. But I feel that whatever resources or methods are available, that we can utilize that so that this becomes a reality in the near future. And with regards to, oh, at the next meeting, I will have an agenda item that I mentioned sometime in the last year. It's simply regarding the post office on McClay. And this is probably a request that would not be fulfilled for many, many years down the road. But I'd like to get the process started now. But it is asking our Congresswoman to look into, A, having some money to renovate the post office a little bit. I think it has a beautiful facade. It would be nice to keep it beautiful. I think the interior is beautiful too. And to actually reconfigure some of the space a bit so that people can drive through and drop off their mail like they can at the post office on Hubbard. There seems to be sufficient space for it. But I always see people either parking in the wrong space or having someone run across the street to do it. And I think that it would be nice just to have that conversation, even though it would be a multi-year process. And lastly, not lastly, two last things. I know that we will have probably a lot of new items to discuss when it comes to our priorities. It's always a challenge, because we know that staff has so much on their plate. And adding even more to that makes, makes it hard to, to complete some of the preexisting council priorities. But I would like to discuss at that meeting, in addition to some new things that I would like to discuss, in addition to some old items, are potentially having a drop off center for used batteries. Republic doesn't take them and they're really toxic to the environment. And also an update on what the county initiatives were with regards to the elimination of styrofoam in restaurants. I know that there was a discussion a few years back, and I'm not really sure what happened with it. But even if it hasn't happened at the county level, maybe it's something that we could look at, at the city level. And in closing, I will say that about, I think nine years back, we told staff, and again, if no one remembers from nine years ago, I forgive you all, because most of you aren't here, to not have, to not bring plastic bottles to the city council meetings, because A, we have some of the best water and B, it just adds more to the plastic pollution that we have. So maybe if we want to continue the old tradition that we used to have of having a, a water jug up there and some compostable cups, that would be helpful so that we don't add to our, our plastic pollution. And with that said, it's great to see all of you. The break was nice, but I also love being here engaging in city issues. So it's great to see all of you.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Thank you. Yeah, so twenty twenty-four was super great. And I think that with this council, twenty twenty-five is going to be even better. I will make one suggestion. I think today is, I don't think I know, today is El Dia de los Tras Reyes Magos, or the Three Kings Day. And all of us, you know, are not with our families today. And I know it's very important to celebrate Christmas and New Year's Eve or New Year's Day that we have off. So maybe we can consider that next year, we do our council meeting on a Tuesday, if it falls again on the Monday, right? But I hope that if you do get to celebrate with your families, when it, tonight, when you get home or tomorrow, that you have a wonderful day with them and that you get to, you know, celebrate God. And I think, I had one more thing and I went off my head. But anyways, yeah, it's been, I think it's been a great twenty twenty-four. I look forward to like all the new items in twenty twenty-five and what we can do in this council. So thank you. Oh, and Happy New Year.
Well, I, I attended several of the events that Councilmember Garcia mentioned. And, and I did attend the, the tree lighting, because I went on a trip with my sister with the senior club. And it just happens to fall in the same day as the, the tree lighting, unfortunately, and it's become a tradition. And she really wanted me to attend with her, and she's my elder sister, so I couldn't tell her no. I just couldn't. So anyway, we, we had a great time and I'm, I'm glad for the time I get to spend with her. Because I don't, being on the council, I don't get to spend a lot of time with my sisters. But the holidays were great. I got to spend time with my husband and my kids, my grandkids and my sisters as well. And I just hope everyone's holiday was, you know, well, nice and peaceful and joyful with your families as well. And I did have my rosca today with my children. I didn't grow up having a rosca with my parents, which I don't know, wasn't part of our tradition, but I know it, it's now a tradition. And I, I did have it at like at two o'clock to pick it up at San Fernando Bakery, which is really good. It was nice and warm when we got it. It was warm. It was so good. And we had to rush while I was typing my notes to kind of get here. But I, I recommend it for next year. But, you know, it's a night, it was, it was nice. My granddaughter's really enjoyed it. And my husband got the baby Jesus, so, so, you know. But anyway, it, it's a nice tradition to have. And thank you all for the, the work you've done and for all of you who worked during the holidays. And it's, it's a commitment to be here and I know what it's like when we, you know, we, to juggle who's going to work the holiday, who's going to take the time off. It's, they're difficult decisions sometimes that we have, you have to make as department heads, right? So thank you for all you do, all the hard work. And Nick, thank you for keeping up the fort and keeping everything going the entire year and all the work you do. So with, if no further discussion, this meeting is adjourned.